Twenty twenty four meeting, uh, we, uh, planning board. I'd like to do an attendance of, uh, Roque.
Dennis here.
Ryan here. Bill here.
Roque, Robert.
Ross here, here.
Phil Ponnell's here.
Phil Lomond's here.
Nick Mobilia here.
Uh, now that we've accomplished that, first thing on the agenda this evening is the continuation of a public hearing on three oh six Maple Street. Are they here?
We have not continuing, but yeah, they're gonna be hearing.
It's a continue, continue public hearing.
Yes, but we have, I, I believe we have a few other things waiting for that, that we were gonna act on.
Will we ask someone to, uh, come first?
Um, I think it was at least at the last meeting, what we were gonna do is they were gonna be the first public hearing that we would hear.
Do you wanna knock on, address Fox Run?
We are gonna do those quick things, procedure first, just, just because we're gonna move that through quickly.
Uh, Fox Run, um,
Who's a covenant?
Road release of the covenant. It's a document that has to be signed.
Right.
You bring us up to speed on that?
Um, this is, oh, yeah, sure. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, yeah, so a hearing on behalf of the homeowner, Robert Cole, Jr.
You bring us up to speed on what?
Yes. So there is an unreleased covenant on lot five Fox Run Road. The covenant is from nineteen eighty-four, so will turn forty years old this year.
Okay.
We're asking it to be released. The homeowner is an innocent party. He's not the first homeowner. He's the third homeowner and unfortunately, this has caused a cloud, cloud on title. So we just like it to be released.
Okay. Amy, uh, legally?
Jim did review the documents and he said there's your issue signings for the boys to vote.
Well, just a point of order. I am recusing my time, but Amy and I work in the head office.
Okay.
This may.
So I would entertain a motion to sign the Fox Run release of covenant. So.
I'll second that, Nick.
We have a motion as made in the floor, seconded, assigned the Fox Run release of a covenant. Any discussion? And that call for the vote?
Dennis, yes.
I. Bill, yes.
Bill, yes.
Nick, yes.
That motion passes, members, and thank you very much.
Would you need to?
We will sign that document.
Would you like me to give you the form of certificate of release? That would be great. I can have it signed and you can pick it up tomorrow.
It'll be signed, I'm gonna pick it up.
Thank you, thank you.
Um, Next Red and Mescal LLC. Um, I'm trying, excuse me, one eighty-six Maple Street, gate installation. Are they here?
Yeah.
All right. Very pleased, sir. How are you?
Oh, good. Nice to see you, man.
Nice to see you again.
So, yeah, um, we need to figure out this, this gate issue. I think this was the the last problem at the site that needed to be fixed, so we get everyone to sign off. Um, a couple of things. One is the location of the gate, the original location of the gate, and I think you have the prints that we sent these to. The original location of the gate showed it further out closer to the road.
Yeah.
There were design changes in the fencing in the project when it happened. If we did that right now and put it where it was, um, basically you're gonna have a gate in the middle of nowhere. Um, so the first proposal is to move that gate back to line up with the fence, the new design of the fence, and where it is.
Yeah.
Um, second big issue that I see is the design of this gate. You guys had asked for a vinyl gate. Um, you've already seen problems with vinyl fencing, and that's with steel columns, posting, all kinds of stuff.
Yeah.
These fences do not do well on sites. Um, I realize in development and EPCs, you know, everybody said, yep, we'll do what you want, and everybody walks away, and then I don't worry about it. Um, I can tell you, a gate, especially in this, this vinyl material, is not gonna last.
Okay, so what, what do you want proposed?
So what we're proposing, and I think we've sent this over to you, is chain link with vinyl slats, kinda like what we have there. Um, we can match colors. We don't have to go with a green. We can do a white, green, whatever. There's all kinds of different colors there. Um, but we'd like to propose something much more sturdy that it's gonna last.
Okay.
Um, if we put the vinyl fence up, I, I give it about a week, week and a half before it's falling down again, so. Um. Yeah, if, if we can do that, I mean, we're more than happy to, to pay for it and get it going and get the fence up there. Um, one of the other concerns that we have is access to this road. I think there's four folks, Franklin, Bellingham. Um, there was another person on there, and the fire department, along with the golf course, is gonna have to have access back in there.
Um. But I don't believe that's correct.
Which part?
I believe, uh, in an agreement that we're getting to in a minute, uh, the golf course is not gonna be golf course in long. So the reason they had access was to get to the maintenance shed.
Correct.
And I believe that's going away.
Okay.
So then they will need, they will not need access to the golf course.
Okay.
Through there, once it materially changed.
Where will that go?
Until that point, I, I don't know, sir. But they will have limited use of that gate once it's erected.
Do they have access, a different access point to get in there now, or?
That's being discussed right now with, um, a project in progress.
Right. Um, so basically, when it comes down to maintaining that fence, um, maintaining the gate, keeping security on that gate, with, with other people having access to it, I'm not too concerned about the town. I mean, if you guys are coming out there, you, you call us, we'll meet you out there.
Yeah.
Talking for you. Franklin, same way.
Yeah.
Um, fire department, we give them access anyways, so it doesn't really matter, but, um, that was my biggest concern, is other folks that.
We're, it's limited with all of us.
Okay.
That's my first time, certainly. Um, as far as Franklin, it's just public safety that has access, right?
Uh, yeah, it'll just be the fire department, and if the town needs to come out and do an inspection, they're gonna call us. We're together.
Okay, so for inspection only, and fire, and police, and all kinds. No, we don't want either of those. Okay, yeah, great. There's other things going on, that's why we're.
You talking about the other solar site?
Yes, yes, and you're welcome to stick around tonight, see that.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, from our standpoint, that's our biggest concern is if, if we're gonna take responsibility in this fence, this gate, whatever it is, we're okay with that, but we're also worried about giving access to too many people. People start breaking things, people leave gates unlocked, and all of a sudden, clearways getting called every time, and we're the ones that are responsible for it, so. We, we wanna be able to mitigate that. We wanna know from the town that that's mitigated, that all these people aren't gonna have that access before we go out and, and put that out, or come to the agreement or something.
It's being written, written, it's being, it's discussed with the, uh, other two parcels.
Correct.
And it's been discussed with them, I believe, since September or October.
Correct. So then I think our biggest issue, and I think John B. Downloader, he's on, on Zoom up there too, he's our asset manager for the sites. I think our biggest issue then is, uh, the design change on the fence, so we'll give you something that's, that's actually gonna hold up.
Okay.
And then location of the fences is probably the two big things that we need.
Okay.
Approved here.
I'm gonna ask other members to have questions. I'll have one at the end.
Good.
I'm good.
No, I'm fine with the chain link fence.
Yeah, my only concern about the channeling fence would be the aesthetics. We spent a lot of time talking about this fence and the gate, of all, and also the gate.
Yeah.
And, um, I, I've seen channeling fences with slats and really think mostly keep out what we don't wanna see. Are there other opportunities for some other kinds of materials?
We, we could look, um, I think the chain link with the slats right now is, is probably gonna be the best to match what you have there, and still give us the sturdiness. We can look at wooden fences. We can, we can look at several different options. I have to give the fence company. Um, but the width of the road, the gate that we need to put out there, that's what the fence company is coming to us and suggesting we put up. I'm, I'm a fence expert. I can only tell you what, you know, I've got two hundred and ninety-five projects across the U.S. Um, we do have vinyl fence on several of those projects, and it's a nightmare to everyone. Um, two, two of those projects, we do have gates on them, and they, they've been removed. Just, they don't hold up. They're on our word, so. Um, the chain link, to me, especially in that area with all the wind that's coming through, we've already had numerous issues with, with the fencing out, you guys have seen it, it's been out there. Um, I, I think the chain link, a more robust fence with the slats in there is, is gonna be your best move here, so. And that's just years, years of dealing with it, I, I've seen, so.
Um, actually, I think I've asked my questions already, so we, we would wanna keep the, you know, number of people that have access to it and things like that down, so. I personally don't, you know, I've seen some, do, do we have renderings of the slats that you're looking to put in? I think we saw it. There were some drawings in there.
Is it the exact one you have now on site? Yeah, it's pretty much the same one that's on site.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't have a problem with that. That, that wasn't on, once.
Yeah.
It's probably easier to, to correct and fix those green slats when they tend to break.
It's much easier, and they don't break that much. I mean, after a few years of being on the sun, they'll, you know, we might lose some of them. The one that we'll put on is gonna have the bottom lock, like, it's out there now. Some of those slats will, will fall out once in a while, and, and that's why we have guys going around monthly to pick them up and stuff.
The fence doesn't have to be green either.
The fence, that was gonna be my point. The, the fence around it is all white, right?
The fence in the front side where this gate is gonna match up with is all the white vinyl fence, so.
You're proposing white?
I would propose a white or like an off-white. We'll, we'll do what we can to match.
Yeah.
I have nothing to add.
Okay. My only question is rather simple, and it's a discussion we had a couple of months ago. Um, your current fence has taken some damage.
Yep.
In hindsight, if we, you know, we would've looked at things differently. Um, as you repair it, are you, are you gonna use this type of fence when you repair what's there already?
So if, if I lose a panel, we just had panels go down the other week in the storm. We had those repaired and had posts put on. If we lose a panel, it, it would look really odd for us to go in and just fix that panel with chain link fence. If that's something that the town is okay with, I don't suggest it. If that's what the town wants, we, we can absolutely do that, and eventually we will have chain link, um, you know, going around most of the site where that fence is gonna come down. Um, but I, I don't suggest it. I, I suggest fixing what's there with what's there, just to keep the aesthetic, so, so.
But at some point, will, will you reach a decision where it's better off just to replace? If you, if we get a bad windstorm?
I, I believe so. I believe as we lose bigger sections of that, if we start losing big sections of it, we're gonna have to pay the money to have, you know, eighty, a hundred feet of it replaced anyways. We're, we're gonna look at, at better options.
Okay, that, that's, that's what I want. That's fair.
And, and we'll read out to Amy or whoever and let them know, like, hey, we've got a big problem there.
Okay. Any questions from the public? Amy, do we need to make a motion?
I would make a motion that you, you are comfortable with that change.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. Ju- just one question before I do that. So the dimensions of the gate will be the same height as the other existing fences and?
I would assume, um, I'll have to get the fencing company out there to take a look at it, but my assumption is we should be able to, to have the same height going across. Um, and I think aesthetically, it would not look right if, if we had two-foot taller on, on a gate there, so. Um, right now, the plan is to, to have it meet the height. Have the same dimensions as the fences.
And the translucency of the, the fence itself, the white slats, those, that will block the interior of the site.
Behind that, yeah, you won't be able to see behind the slats.
And then the, the spacing of the slats and of the fence itself, it's not gonna leave a large gap in, in areas where you can still see through?
The only gaps that you'll see is where the fence comes together, and I'm sure there's gonna be a couple inches where they put the steel post in next to the existing fence. Um, obviously, they're, they're gonna have to leave some kind of room there, but I can't imagine it's gonna be more than two inches, so.
Uh, one other question. Yeah, those, the lock situation. You're okay with having it locked full-time, right?
I would prefer it be locked full-time.
We do too.
I would prefer only clearway, and the fire department has immediate access to it.
Well, fine, fine, as you wish. Yeah, yeah, good. Cause I think that, I think I thought something that you were looking not to do, that's like, I, you're good with that, um.
If, if we need to do, we can do whatever the fire department wants. We need to put a lockbox out there, or we can, we can cascade, put each one of their locks up, whatever they like, so.
And I apologize, I have, uh, two comments. I assume, um, construction, March or April? Based on the weather?
Yeah, um, I think, did we get the, the phone yet from?
Yeah, I have a quote. It just depends on whether, I mean, with the more concrete, it's freezing, but you really have to change the, the concrete, right? So it's preferable to wait till it's a little bit warmer for a couple of days.
Fine, fine with that.
And we'll, we'll work with Patriot Fence. Patriots can be the ones doing it. Uh, we'll get an idea from them, and, and we can send you guys an email.
And lastly, we're moving it further back.
Uh, be further back to me, when we were out there, the right side runs all the way down, and the left side is pushed back.
Yeah.
Where the switchgear, so we'll run it across there, basically behind the flowers, the.
And, and that should be enough area for the fire department to get their trucks off the street.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, and it just, you know.
That was the reason for the requests for change, because where it was originally designed is so short that a, a long truck wouldn't be able to actually fit in there and unlock the gate without the tail sticking at the road.
Yeah, that's where you forget, you know, danger show up, it's sticking.
You should be able to get a couple in line before they even get to the fence.
Okay. Re-motion on the floor?
Yep, so we'll, uh, provide that they, you know, subject to the law, that's, you know, but the gates are of a proper height, all of it.
Whites, white.
White.
Locked.
Locked. What else? Uh, not translucent, same height.
Move back to where the purpose.
Yes. We'll, we'll get all those details figured out with Patriot, and I'll give those over to you, Amy, before we do anything, just so that if there's any more questions, or we've gotta work out some details, we can do that.
Details will be fine.
Yep.
Great.
And I want to thank you for working with us for.
So.
Second?
Dennis, I.
Ryan. Bill, I.
Bill, Nick, I.
That motion passed. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we do quickly, very quickly, this will take two minutes. We have North and Blackstone Street that is seeking a continuation to not be heard tonight.
Yeah.
I just, in the, if, anybody here for that, very quick, one-minute motion, they're looking to continue the meeting to January twenty-fifth, and that's because the peer review has not been presented yet. They're still working on that, so if the board is okay with that, we just continue that one until.
We haven't arrived?
Twenty-fifth, we do, yes, we do.
So, well, just one second. How busy are we on the twenty-fifth?
It. We're not, no, we can, we can handle it.
Okay. Uh, entertain a motion to move, uh, North and Blackstone Street to, uh, January twenty- second meeting in line. I have a second.
Second.
Okay.
May be seconded in discussion. All for the vote.
Dennis, I.
Ryan, I. Bill, I.
Bill, I. Yeah, I.
That motion passes in that, so. Now, to get that on to the original agenda.
Yes, the original agenda we have in, um, three oh six.
Continuation of three oh six Maple Street?
Hey, guys.
Good evening.
Congratulations.
So, 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 based on the college mood. Can you bring us up to speed on where we are?
You wanna start, or you wanna say?
You, you got, you can start.
So, um, thanks again for having us. I think it was October twelfth was that last meeting.
On the thirteen, I can't recall.
Yeah, so it was really late and, um, uh, thought had a great, thought we had a great meeting. Ended pretty abruptly, cause it was getting close to midnight, and I think the goal was, we were talking about getting on December fourteenth because of the backlog of the peer review.
Yeah.
As a hedge, you guys, maybe we wait, we go to January, you said January eleventh, said you'd be first on the agenda, I said, sold. Let's put it down. We're here tonight. Totally understand the engineering part. Peer review, um, unfortunately hasn't come in.
Okay.
Amy was nice enough to continue to give us updates as to the, you know, estimated time of arrival.
Yeah.
We thought there was an outside chance we'd get it, so we s- kinda stuck with the meeting for tonight, mostly because of last time it sorta ended abruptly, and maybe you folks had some other questions, comments prior to the technical part of the peer review. In that timeframe, since October twelfth, we got the application in for the scenic road permit. You know, part of it, cause well, Maple Street, that's been submitted, we're on for the twenty-fifth, so in a couple of weeks for the scenic route, the scenic road permit.
Yeah.
We thought we were gonna be able to dovetail some stuff together, but we're totally flexible.
I think we still can.
Yeah, oh, in that meeting?
Yeah.
Because the hope, because the hope is we get the peer review for this site plan review. We're through any comments prior to that, for be able to address them. Go through that, and also have you respond to the scenic road application, which really the nuts and bolts of it is the sound study, right?
Okay, here's my recommendation. We would need to have the peer review back a week prior to the meeting on the twenty. We're telling, that we're telling that real close. I would suggest moving it to a meeting in February to make sure we have everything, so everyone has a chance to apply on the peer review.
My only concern with that is I think that where we're having the scenic road permit, that's been advertised to be a butters for the twenty-fifth.
That's fine.
And I think if I, you know, I really am gonna push the peer reviewer to have everything to us if they can by Wednesday of next week. I think that, um, i- i- at least if we can get the civil side of things, Mike, is, I, I think civilly, the civil side of the peer review, I think that's fair. If there's some other traffic things, then maybe we, you know, we're gonna have to probably continue with one or two more meetings anyway, but I do think that we can get the civil side of the engineer for that meeting on the twenty-fifth. I, I think that's fair.
Appreciate that.
Okay.
Just to keep things moving.
Yeah, that's fine. I'm, I'm willing to do that, but we.
Okay.
We're talking, you know, the time crunch here.
Understood, and if, for whatever reason, it doesn't p- play out that way, then we can certainly react accordingly.
And we still have to open and continue the scenic road on the twenty-fifth anyway. We have to open that anyway, so I think it's only fair to the applicant to still hold that spot.
Sure, and, and one of the other things, if I could, uh, just to add to what, uh, Andrew said, we didn't wanna miss the opportunity this evening just to hear any comments that the planning board may have.
Yeah.
And if you have some comments, that would be very helpful. We can then take the peer review comments, address those in addition to your comments. So I think that would be the most efficient thing to do, so that was our, our strategy, if you will.
I think most of our comments will be generated by the peer review.
Okay.
You know, on offense.
That's perfectly fine.
Okay.
We just did, we wanted to give you the opportunity to, to voice any comments or concerns that you had now, so, again, we could address those, but if it is primarily peer review, then we'll proceed accordingly.
Any questions from the board?
No.
Not to me. Is there anyone here in the audience for this project that wants to be heard? Before I ask for a continuance and help fairness, if so, it's, yeah, I'd like to hear from them. Anyone in the audience?
Yes.
It's going to be continued later, after peer review. I think I'd like to wait till then. That, that, that's fine. I just wanna make sure you have the opportunity to say something this evening if you wanted to. So I would entertain a motion to continue, uh, three oh six Maple Street development to, um, the twenty-fifth of the month. The rule. Second. Any discussion? And I assume on the agenda, it could be listed under white, that one heading, scenic road and.
Yes, exactly. That's what, I'd like to run those two pair of all, instead of having to come back at another meeting.
It's important to be, if we get the peer review for all the civil debt by Wednesday of next week.
Correct.
Fingers crossed we do it.
Right, and if the traffic needs.
A couple later, that's fine, but we'll still have a year for the twenty-fifth with a scenic road only. And then if we have to push it up, based on the period, we can do that on the twenty-fifth.
Is it okay if I call you every day to see what's coming?
You can tell me every day.
We trust that Amy will send it to us.
Yes. Thank you very much. We'll be talking about.
I understand, it's a.
I know, it's time, I'm engineers. We're even in this. We appreciate it. Thank you very much.
All right.
I sent, I forwarded the fire department comment, and I know stuff.
Yeah.
Dennis, I have to mention that I can talk about that.
Bill, I.
Bill, I.
Nick, I.
That motion passes in there, so. Gentlemen, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Um, Maple Street LLC Solar Development Plan. Can you bring us up to speed on that, Amy?
I think he skipped.
And I know, I, Attorney Brown's here.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
So are you, are we, are you looking to do the decision? Or parcel one, are you looking to, parcel three? We're gonna do continuation of parcel three.
Yes.
Yes.
Attorney Brown, I say you're looking for the continuation of parcel three?
I, yes, I think we previously did the continue, did the continuance.
All right.
So they were just on for the decision on parcel one.
Yep, and then we'll get that in a minute.
Okay.
Um, North and Blackstone Street, we've already discussed.
So we have eighty-five Menden Street.
Uh, is that, was, was sealed?
Yes, it is.
Okay. I like, uh, the owners of, uh, eighty-five Menden Street, come on.
I'll be representing again.
Okay.
Smooth transition.
Okay. Additional billable hours?
Cause we have a motion to open the hearing, so.
Second. We have a motion on the floor to open the hearing. All in favor?
Dennis, I.
Ryan, I. Bill, I.
Bill, Nick, I.
Uh, we need to read the public notice. Nick, would you like to read the public notes?
Sure. Eighty-five Menden Street. The applicant, MZHM LLC, in care of Julie and Paul Rogers, eighty-five Menden Street, formerly Pete's Bluebird, is seeking permits in accordance with the Town of Bellingham zoning bylaw, section two forty dash sixteen. The applicant seeks a development plan approval, section two forty dash fifty-four, special permit and stormwater management permit for the project, which is for a restaurant, which is partially developed, a building, parking, and utility infrastructure street in Bellingham, shown on assessors map thirty-nine, parcels one and one A, book four one four zero zero, page four three three, zone business one. The applicant is seeking a special permit for a reduction of parking.
Now, we've read that. Law is yours.
Thank you very much. Again, my name is Michael Dryden, senior project manager, Alan Van Yan for the record. Uh, with me, I have Alex Siarsky, did I pronounce your name correct?
Both of them.
Thank you. Uh, and owner applicant, um, Paul Rogers. So everybody's familiar with the Pete's Bluebird site. It's been a landmine for quite some time. Um, we're very pleased this evening to present this project to the planning board this evening. Um, so without further ado, I do have PDF files that I can show you. I also have a board here on the easel, whatever is easier. Um, I'm happy to do it either way.
Uh, can we, or both of the audience can see?
Say that again.
You have a PDF file?
I have PDF files, yes.
You know, I think we need you for the audience to see that. So we could do both, it'd be appreciated.
It's matter which floor you're. You have a lot of boards. There we go. That's compatible. Power it on. Amy, is that computer even, how is it working? I don't see, it doesn't appear to have power. Oh, of course, that's it right there. There we go. Thank you very much, Amy.
Thank you so much.
So it looks like we'll be powered up in a minute. I can, I can do some sort of upfront introduction here to the site while that's powering up. Sure. Again, everybody's familiar with the site. Uh, it's shown here on the, uh, context map. It's a two-acre site located within the business zoning district. And I just wanna make a, a point of clarification regarding the locus. So as you can see, the, sort of the magenta lines um, represent the current assessors map, and we, the bold line encompasses a portion of each. And the reason for that is earlier, uh, in the year in, in twenty-three, we brought an A and R before the planning board, we reconfigured this lot. That simply hasn't caught up to the assessors department yet. So what we're calling the locus for the purpose of notifying the butters are the two lots.
Right.
Just to make that clear, yeah.
The lot was to break, the A and R was to break the house off, right? If I remember correctly.
It was, well, there's, there was, there are two lot lines there now. It was just to reconfigure the lot as it's shown in the bold black line.
Okay. And the reason, can you refresh our memory about why we signed it? What was the purpose of the A and R?
In in preparation for this project in terms of its area. Um this is what was agreed upon with the seller uh in terms of redividing those two lots.
Okay.
Fair enough. So let's move on to uh the existing conditions plan. I'll turn the page here as well. Then how we share them. Okay, so um shown at a scale of one equals twenty here, north straight up the page. The gold black line obviously is is the parcel. Again, it's two acres located in the business one, the zoning district. This is the new lot configuration that was approved via the A and R. You see, of course, the existing building uh lower right. I think it doesn't want to work. Um it's the existing parking field here. Uh tree line right here, there's some mature pine trees along the uh eastern side of the project site. There's a fairly steep slope in the back and a bordering vegetated wetland. Uh we are also before the commission, we introduced the project to the commission last evening. Um we're trying to keep both things open in parallel, of course. And we'll be back before them in the near future. Uh the majority of this site is previously deserved uh deserved, excuse me, as part of um the building program that's there. Between the parking lot and the top of the slope is just an open meadow that's actively mowed and maintained. There are currently two curb cuts that provide access to this property. There's the main curb cut here, which generally aligns with the commercial curb cut across the street. And then there's a smaller secondary curb cut in this location. Any questions about the existing site? Be straightforward.
We have that right here.
Okay. Just moving on. Same scale and orientation. This is the proposed layout plan. Uh the building program, of course, um first we need to raise um the existing building. That's about hundred square feet, I believe, roughly. So about half the size of the proposed building, which is a single story, five thousand square foot. Um the building has a partial basement, lower level, about eleven, twelve hundred square feet. And then behind the building, there's an uh an open patio area, roughly eight hundred and fifty square feet. Access to the property will continue to be where it is today. Um that existing curb cut will be maintained and widened. This is a DOT jurisdictional roadway. So we will be filing with DOT.
With the curb cut.
Yes, with the curb cut. Granted curb roundings, the the essentially the the sidewalk, the accessible ramping, the curving will all be in accordance with DOT standards. Uh but we we don't anticipate any issues with DOT because this curb cut, again, lines up with the curb cut directly across the street. Um I'm gonna abandon that. Um you'll notice to the right where that previous curb cut was, the little shaded area.
I've just got to give a little more text to share.
We're going to close that curb cut and again, just have that single curb cut. I want to spend a few minutes talking about parking. In accordance with your zoning bylaw, based on the total square footage, first floor, lower level, and the area of the back patio. We're required to provide a hundred and thirty eight parking spaces. That is far more than this facility needs. So what we're proposing to the planning board this evening as part of development plan approval is a special permit to reduce the number of parking spaces. From one thirty eight uh to ninety two. That's about thirty three percent reduction. Based on uh my client's experience in this business and the restaurant business and the nature of this facility. They believe that's more than adequate to satisfy the needs of the facility. So. And obviously, that has some pretty significant benefits, reduced impervious, less stormwater, uh less impact to the site. And I know in the past, the board has actually encouraged a reduction in parking. So what I did provide in the packet. If it is helpful to the planning board, it's just a table um. That demonstrates or compares, if you will, the Bellingham zoning requirements for parking to all the surrounding towns or the majority of the surrounding towns. And if you look at that, you'll notice that Bellingham by far requires the most parking. Um there are some that are slightly higher than what we're proposing, but again, we feel like we've sort of hit that sweet spot, if you will, in terms of what is required. Any comments on that or any thoughts on parking? Is that generally?
We'll discuss your comments by the way.
Okay.
I feel your presentation.
Very good. I'll spend a moment on utilities. Power, water, and gas are all readily available in Menden Street. Uh there is no municipal sewer available. Uh there is currently two small septic systems serving the existing use or the prior use. We are proposing a subsurface sewage disposal system. It's a Fresby system. And if you could go to C seven. So the shaded area that you see is the proposed system. That is roughly sized. Of course, it is subject to approval by the Board of Health. Uh it may need to uh be enlarged slightly based on some adjustments we made to the number of seats in the building, but that roughly represents. The location and size of the subsurface sewage disposal system. We did do witness testing with the Board of Health. Uh for that system, so we know where groundwater is and we know that that system is feasible. Excuse me. I'll touch quickly on stormwater management. Um we can just leave this page up. Um it's also shown on this utility plan. So you'll see the the building in the center of of the uh site, both on the north and south sides are. Subsurface detention and infiltration systems. We really don't have the opportunity here just because of the site geometry, the topography. Uh for open traditional, uh conventional detention basin. So all of our mitigation is proposed via subsurface. Um so those systems are linked and ultimately you'll see a discharge pipe to the extreme north. That is the one component that uh we discussed with the commission last night that extends into the fifty foot buffer zone. Um their, one of their concerns was erosion and scouring at that point. So we'll probably, you know, expand the riprap that you see on that on that plan. It is a two to one slope that it daylight's due, so we want to make sure that we don't cause a problem on the slope and of course, in the wetland resource area. We provided a traffic study uh with the packet. And really, no, I, no issues were identified whatsoever. Site distance, of course, is essentially endless in this location. Grip generation is minimal. Um. So if there are questions regarding traffic, what I would suggest is we bring in our traffic engineer for the next meeting. Uh we didn't think that was really necessary for this evening unless there were concerns of traffic. And again, as I mentioned earlier. This is the DOT jurisdictional roadway, so um. This information will be reviewed by DOT as well.
Okay.
The only other thing I wanted to touch on uh is peer review. Um I wanted to just share what we discussed with the commission last evening. Uh initially, we discussed potentially using BSE to do the engineering view because that's the commission's peer review consultant. But after some discussion, it was uh thought that the best way forward was to use the planning board's consultant for. The technical aspects of the project, stormwater management. And the commission um again was was fine with that approach. So. Our only wish is that we have one peer reviewed consultant. It sounds like everybody's on board with that. So.
Okay.
That's a brief overview and with that. Open it up to questions.
Um we did get a correspondence from the conservation commission agent. Um and basically she said that um. They are. The conservation commission would like to do a stormwater drainage system and believe that the planning board would also want to do that as well. So we do a confirmation that um Hannah did.
Okay.
Wrote some.
And of course, we're on parallel.
Absolutely. And we did get a correspondence to from the DPW through um director in regards to things that was in your packet as well.
You rehearing, did we require you?
Um not at this point.
Okay.
Uh excuse me, Amy.
Yes.
Um I did um raise a concern about there's no photometric plan as well. Is that coming?
There's no point by point plan, but there are foot candle illumination levels included on the site plan. If you prefer a point by point analysis, we can certainly provide that.
Yeah, we we normally do. Um this is, you know, it's nestled in between the um residential area of Rose Ave. So it it's probably going to be an issue. So we would like to see a plan showing no um lighting, you know, coming off the site.
Please, we do that for you.
Thank you.
I have shown everything to be down drafted. Thanks you down.
Absolutely.
Uh any questions?
Sorry, it'll be low mounted LED lighting.
Fine.
First.
Yes.
All right. I have a couple of questions or comments. Um so thanks for the presentation. Very helpful. Um. I noticed that the the layout that you have on here, it's pretty maxed out. Understandable. I know it's not, it's a already developed site. But um what's your proximity to the property lines as far as your parking for the? West and east? I know it looks like you're clearing the limited trees along the eastern property line.
Correct.
Um. Well, I guess I should, what is, what's the proximity to the houses over there? Are those houses on those lots?
Well, you can see the first one that's closest to Menden Street.
Yeah, no, Lord.
And the others are set back a little bit farther than that. And the fact that you might show on the GIS map. And while I'm finding the map, so on the on the east side, it's about eight to nine feet from the edge of pavement. Uh to that property line, there's also a fence there today, the six foot tall solid PVC fence.
Okay.
Um so it's hard to see, but I'll just outline them. There's the one that you saw on the screen. There's, so these are set back quite a bit.
Okay, I see.
Much farther than that. So the one that you see that was on the screen is closest to the property line.
Yeah, my main concern was screening and if you're cutting down, if there's. PVC fence, that's helpful.
Yes, it runs.
Question if that was going to be proposed.
It runs the majority of that property line. It's on the neighboring property. It's not a fence that we own or control.
Okay, all right. Um. And then. From the peer review side, I don't know if this was discussed last night. Is Concom looking to? Look at getting the the limits of the wetlands peer reviewed?
I don't know. I did, I I did not have that in the email.
All right. And obviously with us, we don't usually look at that, right? The peer review for us, but I assume our peer review consultant. Something to know, let's.
Yeah, I can touch on that. We didn't, I guess, come to that conclusion.
Yeah.
But I will tell you, everybody acknowledged that we have a a slope in the back and the wetland is defined by the toe of the slope. So. There's very little opportunity, if you will, to move flags. I I can't imagine a flag would be moved.
Sure.
So again, just very straightforward delineation.
Got you.
Yeah, we are walking the site on the twentieth.
Okay. I mean, it's more of a conservation thing anyway, just something to note if with the peer review consultant.
There are, there are six flags essentially that.
Gotcha.
At the project site, so.
Okay, perfect. And then from stormwater, it looks like. I know you've stated everything's going to be subsurface and I see that you're doing pre-treatment with oil grit separators.
Correct.
Yeah. One little nitpicky comment that I just wanted to go to. I know um it looks like for your uh erosion control plan, there's two stockpile areas. One of them is in pretty close proximity to that steep hill where snow comes up. That can maybe be moved at the moment.
We got the same comment from the commission.
Oh, really? Okay, so that that would be, that would be good.
It's easily done.
Yep, okay. And uh I'm interested to see what the uh peer review comes back with, but I'm gonna. Hold there, but other than that, it looks, you know, the building itself is beautiful. And uh it's nice too that, you know, you have outdoor seating and it's in the back. I don't know, public safety might have some comments on. Lighting or whatever.
We will await those comments and we dress them shortly.
But thank you.
Thank you.
This is a total dead down of the site.
It is. Right. And you're gonna eliminate the basement? Fill that in.
Yes.
On grade, is that called?
That is correct.
Yeah, a good point. The only thing it's that will remain is the pylon sign in the front.
Okay.
Be retrofitted, obviously, for new.
Um so I I I. Understand that this is a sort of a preliminary discussion before we get into the details. And I also appreciate we're going from a used to a light use and so. So I understand that. I'd be interested in learning, if if not tonight, in future meetings, sort of the scale. Of the the new building versus the old in terms of, I understand that the square footage is roughly double. Um but in terms of. Seats and expected volume of business and things like that, what, you know, just so we have something to compare what was, what's was to what will be. Um I'd be interested in learning that. I'd be interested in hearing your thoughts on any concerns regarding sound. Whereas, you know, I understand that the 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 business of the restaurant's been operating out of this. Site for a long time, but we're introducing um an outdoor eating element. So perhaps there's some consideration of. Sound and if we're moving the, if we're moving the footprint of the building to a different location and there's. Uh exhausts and other systems and and things like that, what what impact does that have on the existing neighborhood? And then uh just to pick up on Rob said, I'm also want to make sure that we're mindful of the residential neighbors. And that we're adequately screening and we're not making anything worse for them. So in terms of keeping trees and building fences and doing all of those things. I'd be interested in seeing what your thoughts are on that. And then um if not tonight, some other night, just what's the science behind the number of parking spaces you're looking for? How do you come to that? I I saw the chart in your your handout. What's the magic of that number versus?
Well, I can certainly answer some of these questions. We may have to do a little research to fully answer all of the questions, but. Um starting with the uh last one, the number of spaces. First of all, as I mentioned, we did compare the zoning with surrounding towns just to get an understanding of what is typically required. So we sort of thought that we checked that box. And again, based on. Paul and Julie's knowledge uh of the business, they understand what they'll need for parking. So we we ended up targeting ninety two spaces. Initially, we had. Uh a few less than that, but uh we found a way to work in a few more spaces. Uh and again, that that's really what it's based on is, I think the most important thing here is to make sure that the complement of parking will adequately serve the use. Um I think we could probably all agree that a hundred and thirty eight spaces is is far too much. Um but so we're relying on, again, surrounding zoning and what we know the client, our client needs for parking.
And and I think I would go back to the the discussion, not tonight, but uh about scale and expected. Numbers of patrons, things like that, you know, that I think that would go hand in hand with the parking conversation.
Sure. It also goes hand in hand with with the trip generation, which we've provided to the board. Um regarding your question about screening, as as we mentioned a little while ago, along the eastern site boundary, there's an existing. Six foot tall white PVC solid fence uh for most of the of. The area adjacent to the work, if you will. Um no trees are being removed once you get to the sort of the toe of the slope, so there'll be no visual impact from there. So. Um there are some mature pine trees that will need to be removed, but they're they're big mature pine trees with no low branches or understory. So they don't really provide screening. Their canopies are very tall. Um so I don't think there's going to be much impact, if any, um to adjacent residential properties. Um there isn't a a residential property, of course, to the west, but that is the seller and fully, you know, understands. Uh the nature of this use and the reason for the land being um acquired.
I I get that as well and I, but that house won't always be owned and occupied by the seller. Which is mindful of future potential problems.
So noted. Um exhaust odors impact, uh we can certainly give that some thought. Um mechanical systems, things of that nature. Uh and report back to the board. That sort of dovetails with the outdoor eating element and the, you know, the any noise or lighting that would be required. Um. Sure, absolutely, yeah. So initially, we had all the walk-in coolers and refrigeration outside. Um, that was part of the discussion in terms of noise mitigation, and so the all the refrigeration is in the partial basement at this point. I'll just go to the elevations, but on the flat roof section, we have about a three-foot parapet that will block a lot of the rooftop units. The goal is that they're not visible, and that will also help with noise mitigation as well. Um, so that's on the flat section of the roof. And that for majority of the fans, exhaust, makeup air unit will will be. That's where we're at now, and that's sort of the the thought process behind it.
So that's in the front of the bathroom, correct?
No, that's the reason for the parapet.
The back will do that.
Yeah. Exactly.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Yep, thank you.
Yeah, I absolutely wanna see the map behind the parking. Um, you know, looking at the patio here and, you know, how many, you know, broken out, how many seats are you expect, if, you know, if your tables on the out there, how many seats you have out there? Um, you know, is there a bar area inside? Is how many tables inside? I mean, I, we're gonna have to look at that very tightly.
Yeah, sure.
Is that, definitely one, I mean.
It is all included in.
Are those, I'm looking at like C five, drawing C five, is that in your deck right there?
Yes.
You know, just looking at the back patio there.
Yep.
See, I mean, the, is the back, are those tables there, seven tables?
Yes.
Four seats a pop, and then are those at the, right next to them, are those two s- two cedars or are those planters? To the, little bit uh to the north of that.
Before the buffer?
Yeah, right before the buffer. I mean, are those are those seats or are those? Oh, yeah, though it doesn't show it in the legend right there, but.
There's a landscape buffer outside the patio edge that's eating on the patio.
Yeah, no, if I just doing the rough map, seven, seven tables times four is twenty-eight. If those are two, are those two tables, or going a, or two-person tables times seven, if that's what those are, tables. So we're here for forty-two people already.
Yeah, so I can tell you, we have two hundred and sixteen seats.
Two hundred.
That is the total count. That that was included in the narrative.
Okay.
Now.
That's, yeah.
So what I also did, just for your convenience, is I went through, excuse me, Alex. I went through again the surrounding towns and made an apples-to-apples comparison. Some towns wanna base it on square footage, some others wanna base it on number of seats. So I I made an apples-to-apples comparison.
Do you have your back, some occupancy?
We do. Uh, that is in here. I don't know it off the top of my head.
Anyway, when we get to, when we get to that conversation, that that's a number we definitely wanna play into this too, so.
So do you remember? There was new plumbing codes that came out.
Yeah.
Um, so the occupancy will probably drop a bit because of the new plumbing regulations.
Okay.
Uh, I don't have the exact numbers, cause that just came out and we haven't gone back to the seating. But at the time when this was laid out, we were maximizing maximizing the occupancy.
So two, is there a bar area there inside?
Inside, yes, there's a bar from the center.
That's not really included in the seat system. Okay.
It is, it it.
It is, okay. Anyway, when we, another night, we'll talk about that. Now, as far as the, as far as the um the buffering, I've qualified this site three times today. Um, and you know, that we definitely are gonna spend some time on the buffering. Um, the white vinyl fence doesn't cover all the houses. It doesn't go, I mean, there's a house on that drawing right there that I don't think is, you know, we'd need some buffering along Menden Street there. It's on the uh, the right hand side. Anyway, we're gonna uh look at the, look at the buffering all the way around the site. So that certainly wanna see that as well. So, and I think I'd like to hear from these purely you on this too, before we get much further, but thank you.
Thank you.
Carry on. Is this the first location for Lucille's or is there, is there another location anywhere?
This is the first of the season.
Yes, it'll be a.
Restaurant.
The reason I ask, I think we benefit from, so we better understand what the typical day-to-day would be like at Lucille's. Is there a lunch crowd, dinner crowd, or private events? Is there? I think as we move through the process, we would, we would benefit from that. And then the question I had was um specific to deliveries. I saw the delivery area. Is that the only entrance that that they would need to get to the prep kitchen, or is there any reason for deliveries to the need to access, which shows the the wine cellar or anything like that? Would there be delivery trucks needed anywhere else except for that back corner?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but we have one service area. We wanted that all consolidated in the back left corner of the building.
All right, thank you.
A lot of the questions I have have been asked by other board members. I believe uh the stormwater peer review, we can go into that right away. Um, I believe that parking is something that we can work with and back into. You know, not, well, how many, you know, the town's needs and your needs, I believe. And I think you addressed uh one of the concerns with the noise and how you're attempting to reduce that. I think if that can be looked at to further reduce it, it's fine. Uh, I want to commend you on uh what you're trying to do with this site. Uh, I don't know how old uh Pete's is, is, I was here, I moved here almost forty years ago. And uh it was a staple here, and it's nice to see something coming back uh in that location. Um, before I finish my comments, I'd like to know, I assume there are people there in the audience that may wanna speak and people um. I'd like to turn it first to people in the audience. Anyone?
I go, how you doing, sir? Uh, Bill Coniaris, ninety-three Menden Street. Uh, my parents owned Pete's Bluebirds of nineteen forty. And I just have a couple of questions about, one is about that fifteen-foot temporary easement that's gonna come onto our property, where they're gonna put some fill and then grade it down. Wh- what is that gonna happen after that? Are we gonna have any water run off of there, or is there gonna be a wall there or a fence or?
To the grading plan, which I believe is four. Six. Maybe six, sorry. But she said.
Yeah, on the western property line.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
What we we have, we had approached um the gentleman that spoke and it was my understanding that he was, he was okay with a little bit of grading. What we're trying to do is just avoid a retaining wall at the property line. So what we're showing there is a twenty-foot wide temporary grading easement. It would be a three-to-one slope. It would be stabilized, just like the meadow, the adjacent meadow. Uh, so it would be a small area that, of course, does slope downward to the property, but it's a very small area. Um, so hopefully that that answers the question.
If. Uh, if I may, uh it's fifteen feet in width and what's the length of the easement? Cause it takes up probably four fifths of the length of the easement.
I can approximate it.
Okay, that's true. I can't do some scale on this place, because it's.
About a hundred and thirty feet.
So it's a hundred and thirty feet by approximately fifteen feet. So there will be fill placed, uh the easement's temporary, but the fill is permanent. And and do you have an agreement with this gentleman and and writing that that that's acceptable?
So please feel free to chime in. It was my understanding that the individual was, it was discussed with the individual and that was an acceptable approach. So so if if that's a misunderstanding, then.
Yeah.
We can certainly.
Not really sure.
Well, I know our lawyer, Steve Azini, talked to Mark Allen about it. So I I don't really know what the uh the final outcome was.
Okay, I I must admit, I'm a little taken aback here because I thought that this was fully vetted. My apologies for that. We can certainly circle back. We can meet with you and and.
So I. I was asked to ask you about it.
Yes.
So I asked you and you said, yes, no problem, so I just.
You just said it's a temporary easement.
Right.
So, but I didn't really understand what a temporary easement is.
Oh, well.
So.
Okay, all right.
I know what an easement is, cause they tried to do that to us next door, at seventy-seven Menden Street years ago.
Right. Oh, wow.
When they built those houses back in the sixties, they surveyed it long. And I remember my father talking to Mr. Winaco, and he said, we are putting that driveway in right now. Part of that land is ours. But, you know, we're neighbors, so you can use it, and eventually if we sell, whoever lives there sells. Keep us posted with the deal. So uh our neighbors are here tonight with seventy-seven Menden Street, vetting and shot a cup sink. So I have, I have a a little diagram here, if you'd like to look at it, about the an easement agreement. For like a dollar a year. There's six different families that live in that house.
Okay.
And we always had an agreement with them, that they could use it, maintain it. At one time, there was a fence there because some of the families had kids, so we wanted to have the kids to have a little privacy there in the yard. But this is always like an agreement we've drawn up for a dollar a year. So I don't know if the new buildings is gonna come in to the driveway where they live right now.
So I'm I'm a little confused by this sketch. This is that, this angle point, can you paint that over? Cause that appears to be that angle point. So we're, we're talking about an area that's, well, you know where the new lot line is here. So your, your home is over here.
Yes, correct.
By the east, ninety-one seventy-seven.
So this is to the right, yeah, this is to the right of of the Bluebird, okay?
Right.
And that's, and their driveway is like right there. So that's why they're concerned too, is the new building gonna go right into the yard, or they're gonna have to um move their driveway.
No, no, absolutely not. If if you look at the plan there.
Okay.
Um, to the lower right, you see the existing dwelling.
Yes.
And the driveway's there as well.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I can, I can.
Okay.
Let me show you up here at the bigger one.
Thank you, sir.
So what you.
You wanna look at this?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, this is a neighbor's.
Sure, absolutely.
Absolutely, I'm sorry.
No, no, no.
You're fine.
So here's the existing house.
Okay.
And then this is one edge of the driveway. The other edge of the driveway is very close to the property line here. The the parking is quite quite a ways away from the building, is is certainly nowhere near your property. We're actually um, with this proposed plan, there'll be less, there'll be an increased buffer from the parking area in any activity to your property.
Sure, yeah.
There's actually more.
Yeah, I could, I could later in the, like, right now, right now, the this buffer, we have this too much buffer, but we're getting some extra space though.
Absolutely.
For this model. Uh, but I, I mean, I have my own questions I can probably ask once he's done, so.
Okay, and and aside from this meeting, we're happy to have a meeting with you.
Yeah, good, okay.
Out in the field, we can, wherever you want, we're happy to do that.
I think we should with all the neighbors. Cause we always had a good rapport with all the neighbors over the years. And Julie and Rose Ave, when they built those houses, where everybody got along. And the loudest day was when we had Daniel Koshow and Joe. For years, so that there was a dipshocking, and of course, everybody's gonna peel out and everything and but that was the lineup, and I'm like, four in the afternoon, so it didn't go into the nighttime.
Okay, okay, thank you, thank you.
I'll reach, I'll give you the card and we can.
Okay, what's that?
I I'm actually managing the project, so.
Oh, okay.
I can't manage them all, so.
Okay.
Yes, that's all right. Any other, yes, sir, I would suspect you.
Yep.
So I live in seventy-seven Menden Street right now.
Yeah.
We actually, is my wife. So uh I just have a couple of questions. Your question is we do have a lot of pine trees, old pine trees, like you said, right? And we are getting rid of those, some of the pine trees.
Correct.
But we wanted to understand when you say some, which are those? Like, we have a lot, right? And most of the trees right now, just to uh make you aware of the situation, most of these pine trees are very old, and whenever there's a storm or anything, most of the branches, they just fall in our swimming pool or in our backyard, and we have to take care of all the mess. Right now, also, yesterday's storm, you see, still we have so many branches in our backyard. So, and now the, with the new plan, we are planning to have parking space just right down the those pine trees, so it's again not safe for those parking spaces as well. So why can't we get rid of the, all the old pine trees?
We are.
Get assessed.
Oh, you're getting.
They're all gone.
They all?
I don't usually like to report that we're removing trees, but.
But those are needed, yeah. But those are needed, that's why. Yeah, if we are doing it, it's good, it's good for us.
Yeah, and right, we'll also need to know, because when you're doing it, our fence is like right there.
Sure.
So we need to be, just wanna know, like, so that if there's like, it's gonna like, for, they are huge. I'm pretty sure they're gonna fall on either side.
They will be felt inward to this, to our site.
Oh, okay.
And of course, if there's any damage that's caused to the fence, it would be repaired at the owner's expense.
Yeah, so every time we see like branches falling off, we get problems, so that's just wanted to make you aware beforehand, because we are doing a whole new construction there, so this, this is the time, it's easier for everyone to take care of that. That's just why, that's why I just wanted to make you aware. And then I have one more question, uh if I can. Thank you. So with the new, with the new layout, new structure, we see um the orientation of this parking has changed, completely changed. Before cars were entering and they were just going towards the woods, and all lights were facing towards the woods. So none of the neighbors will have direct light facing in on their houses. And if you see seventy-seven Menden Street, most of our um rooms are just facing on the east side, so, and with the layout, all the cars entering will be first going towards our house and then moving to back of the.
Understood.
Right. So if we can ensure that we do the proper blockage, I I did, I did see like we have some um, with some trees and shrubs.
Yeah.
Uh, to be planted there, which is good, but just to ensure that those are proper, so that we shouldn't get those lights directly into our bedrooms or the rooms which we have in my side.
I think your concerns are consistent with some of the comments we've already heard, so we will take a look at that and we'll make sure that um if fencing needs to be extended, supplement landscaping to block headlights, we'll incorporate that.
Yeah, fence, we are okay with not fence having extended, because that blocks all the properties, it doesn't give a good look to the neighborhood also, so it's okay not to have fence, but if you can have some trees or shrubs.
Low-level planting.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, that would be better, like, we don't wanna put a blockage there, saying, okay, like, those are different neighbors and these are different neighbors, kind of, no. So even the shrubs and plants would be good.
Okay.
We do see one light that's gonna be like right there.
Uh, yeah, the parking, the parking, parking lights. So just wanted to understand the like, we do see it's a four, four, forty feet height?
Yes.
So forty feet is quite high, right? It it would almost to the our bedroom level, I feel.
I think it's important for you to understand the the way the light is being directed. We'll use cutoff shielding, so you won't see the source of the light.
That's good.
And it will be directed inward. It's not like a floodlight that, you know, is a three-hundred-and-sixty-degree lighting.
That's perfect, then.
And I believe we asked for a photo metric.
Correct.
So you'll have another plan to show photo metrics at a future meeting, and we'll address, address those concerns you have.
Okay, that's great. Then, uh, and one last question I have.
Sure.
This is, this is quite a big project, right?
It's a large.
It's a large-scale project. Uh, so from development perspective, wh- what timelines you have in mind and what measures we are planning to keep neighborhoods safe with the dust, debris, like one of the source said, what shield you'll be providing, right? So would that be enough to pro- protect the, uh, protect our buildings from dust and debris when we'll be doing all the demolition work and stuff?
Sure, sure, good questions. So first, to answer your question on timeline, we are seeking permits as quickly as we possibly can. And the idea is to, is to start demolition uh in the springtime. So it will be a quickly moving project. Um, so first and foremost, dust will be controlled during demolition in accordance with all um applicable regulations. When we, when we're moving earth on dry days, water trucks will be utilized to keep dust uh to a minimum. Uh, construction fencing, all all standard um approaches to construction will be used, so that if there's children in the neighborhood, they're not able to just walk onto a construction site. So hopefully that addresses your concerns.
Sure, yeah, I just wanted to bring this point so that it's, ensure like proper safety measures and also protection is provided during like the debris and stuff, because that's very important. Because that's very important, um.
I have just an interject remark. And with all our projects, once we make a decision, we do discuss construction at a great, a great way. So that will be an ending decision we decide, decide to address. Um, you can feel free to come to these meetings.
Sure.
And you will make sure we, uh, between all parties involved, address your concerns. But it, it's standard for everything we do.
Sure, thank you.
And, and we work hand in hand. You may not surprise that we have construction management requirements.
Thank you. Yeah, honestly, this is the first kind of a meeting that we are attending, so we weren't sure even we should ask such questions or not.
So. We'll not be afraid to ask the question.
Thank you. I think I'm good then, if you have anything.
I think, like, those were the major concerns, because we are like the, like, right there, right? And I know you guys will be having, so sometimes that happens, like, people confuse the drive phase. Right? And like, they'll turn in thinking, because the, who the master's like sometimes, for us as well, they like tell you a high house before or something. So like, proper signage and everything, like, people are not getting in and they're just being confused where we are.
Yeah. That's a great point. I think you're gonna find that that problem will go away. Because that curb cut, that secondary curb cut that's closest to your driveway is being closed and there'll be a row of street trees. So it should clearly define the entrance to the property.
I agree.
Okay, yeah, thank.
Sorry, miss, just one, one more point. Um, so we, just to let you know that, that the PVC fence that you see, behind that, there's a swimming pool. So when you are doing the demolition work, I'm not sure if that has to be protected somehow. I mean, the pool needs to be, need some special protection or anything, I'm not aware of that. So if you can just let the construct, construction team know that, okay, there's a pool beside this, behind this, uh, fence. So they would be aware of like.
Yeah, it's like right.
The demolition.
Sure, we'll, we'll take.
Yeah, it's very close to the boundary.
Okay. I mean, there's no fluff thing or anything proposed or anything of that nature, so I don't think there's much to be concerned about there, but we'll take that at the.
Yeah, just, just wanted to.
Yeah, and if you want to like come on and like. But like come see things, because that might make decisions for your easier as well. Like, just let us know and we can like arrange something, if you are aware of like how things are there for us.
Very good.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, sure.
Thank you. My pleasure. Anyone else in the public? Any else online? What I would think you may wanna do before our next meeting, before going further. Um, I think the neighbors and us have touched on a lot of similar concerns. Um, do we have any concerns about asbestos? In tearing this building down?
So, so Bill, um, regarding, uh, any kind of demo, they will have to do a survey prior to. Um, and they're, they're well aware of the demolition, uh, regulations with the DEP. So if, if there is any kind of, um, unsuitable material, they will handle that in that regard.
Okay, I just want to make sure the public knows that we're addressing.
Yes, there is, uh, there are provisions, um, that they will have to follow. Um, I think, you know, I, it's a, I think it's a really good plan in general, you know, that they're, uh, they've described and they've designed here. Um, I think the most important, I mean, let's keep in mind that this is a business zone still. And this is by right, this is a by right project. Uh, but I think the most important thing is protecting the neighbors, you know, as far as, uh, privacy, the lighting plan that we discussed. Um, and the, uh, property in the front, that's, that's good dialogue with maybe, you know, meeting with the, the, um, homeowners there. To ensure that, I mean, that, that area there in the front is obviously, um, green space, so that's good. You know, the, um, as far as the development being a little bit displaced from their property and, uh, protecting them, but, um, you know, I, I look forward to seeing this, move forward to the next meeting, I think it's a good design.
Thank you. Um, we obviously need to get a pair of two done. Um, uh, what's my thing on that?
I don't think we're gonna have it, we definitely will not have it for the twenty fifth, obviously, because we have to create the scope, um, so. Um, I'm thinking. What about February twenty second? Does that seem doable?
Certainly would work on our end.
Okay.
Uh, I know from the last meeting.
I know.
There's sort of a backlog with period, so.
And I'm thinking if we can. We could do this internally with, um, we, I can see if we can use another one of the peer reviewers, because it's simply, I think, I think anyway, the consensus is it's just this, it's the snow here.
Right.
So I think between now and the, hopefully twenty second, we can get the scope within a week or two and then get the peer review for a meeting on the twenty second of February, if that works.
I, I think that's reasonable.
That's reasonable.
Do we wanna look at, um, one company, two companies?
I'm gonna reach out to whomever we think can get it to us by the twenty second, because everybody's busy.
I know.
With, with peer review.
Yeah.
Yes.
What I'd like to see done, if possible, I think this will give us enough time. Is to have you sit down with the neighbors. And if you, you need us to find a venue for that, hopefully we can do that. Um, but if you just get the neighbors together, get their ass apart.
I'd recommend a tailgate meeting, just to stand right there on the site.
Okay.
The best way to approach it.
That's fine. You can set that up.
Sure.
Uh, we will not be there. I think it'd be better if we're not, we're not there, so we don't influence discussions. And then you can bring that back to us. But I think you've heard, um, traffic, um, noise, lighting, stormwater. Um, I don't think anything that is in front of us is a major concern. I think we can work together and work with the neighbors. I do think, uh, we may wanna have to look, good point was made. About buffering on both sides of the property, especially since there's concern right now about the easement. And some clarification on that. So I think that may be two topics you may wanna have. One with the neighbors and then one specifically with the neighbor from the easement.
Absolutely.
So the, the other people, you don't have to be privy to that. And you can just, yeah, get the results to us on the twenty second. And that's reasonable. Yes, sir.
Bill, Matt Clark, uh, Fluff Builders, the general contractor, uh, for the project. I'm just wondering if we can get that peer review a week in advance to, so we'd have an opportunity to address some of the concerns, we come here kind of ready to, uh, to discuss those, those issues.
I mean, we will turn the revisions and responses around as quickly as possible, but.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, a, a week would be great, two weeks would be even better.
Yeah, that's why we're pushing up to the twenty second. I think anything before that would be rather, you know, not, not, not in that Bible, but yes, we'll try to get everything needed. Man, as soon, as soon as we can. So I, I wanna, you know, make these, uh, future meetings run, yeah, run smoothly so far. I don't see any hiccups coming. I just think, um.
If we need not, I mean, that's the reality of it too, I don't, you're in the field, it's.
The timeframe's a little out of our hands.
It is.
Fortunately, it is. You know, we've always worked with the applicants, especially if you get the peer review the day of the meeting, I mean, we'll at least discuss.
Yeah, we just like an opportunity to, that we can come here with comments to the.
Of course.
Actually, even revisions, so that we're ready to discuss some real.
We want that, that meeting as well.
Right, yeah.
Bill, it's a good question. If that easement, um, situation changes, does that fundamentally change your plan in any way?
It does not, just, it would be a very low retaining wall that we'd have to, so really what it comes down to, um, does Bill prefer to see sort of a grass slope or a retaining wall? So it, it really will not change the plan, we just want everybody to be happy and understand exactly what we're doing. Thank you.
Any other questions in the board? I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, could we include within that motion, we will need, um, a deadline decision extension, so I was suggesting till, uh, March twenty ninth.
Okay. Now, just, just for, to let you know, that's the decision deadline. It doesn't, we want to go up to that date. It just gives us some wiggle room to maneuver between the twenty second and the twenty ninth. And hopefully, you know, we can accommodate that.
And that's via form that you'll send me?
I have it here, if you wanna sign it before you leave, or I can send it electronically, whatever works for you.
So I would entertain a motion to continue the public hearing. Um, one thing. Amy, is there anyone, uh, on Zoom that I can hear this?
You don't see anybody's hands up. Oh, there's an iPhone with a hand, but that could just be the curse.
That's the curse.
I think we're okay.
Every time.
You think we're okay?
Okay. Entertainer motion, uh, in the public hearing on the twenty second, and extend the decision deadline to March twenty ninth.
So.
Have a second?
Second, Nick.
Um, A by Brian. All in favor?
And I.
I. Go I?
Go I. Nick, I.
And Marsha Pasterson, Nelson. Done, we'll see you in the twenty seconds.
Thank you.
We'll work with each other, and we'll work with the neighbors. I think he makes the headway.
We'll make a lot of progress.
I think it's a good project.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Okay, well, so.
Everyone then.
Let me, I'm gonna just.
Yep. Yeah.
Hey, Charles, how are you?
Wow, how are you?
Good. Yeah, kind of a little smile, right?
Yes.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
Yeah, there's one spot.
Okay.
I'll bring it up. It was agreed to. Why is I just?
There is. That can end.
We all set?
We all set.
Next, I'm the engineer, we're jumping on order a little bit. Is the decision on um. Next grade, Alaska being LLC parcel one. On decision, Amy, can you bring us up to date?
Um.
And do we have our attorney here?
We attorney present, we both are present on Zoom. And we've been back and forth with the decision and hopefully we're okay. And if we have a few tweaks, I think we'll be fine, but you, you know. The plan is to sign the decision tonight.
Okay.
If everybody's comfortable.
Attorney, uh, start with attorney Brad.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Chairman, Peter Brown, on behalf of the applicant, John Cusick for Bowler. Um, I agree with Amy, we're here for the execution of the decision. The uh, decision was circulated a few days ago, which incorporated all of the changes that were voted and agreed upon on December twenty eighth. We noted just three little uh, areas where changes that were voted on weren't included in the last draft, so we identified those and provided them back to um, to Amy and counsel. But nothing that wasn't voted and discussed on the twenty eighth. This board closed a public hearing on the twenty eighth.
Yep.
And we're here tonight for uh, execution of the decision. And uh, we are satisfied with it and thank the board for its efforts in getting us to this point.
Thank you. Our attorney.
So I had sent Amy a couple of clarifications, I didn't receive anything from Peter, but if you have any specific questions for me, I'm here.
I'd like to start with our board members.
I mean the.
I have nothing further.
Nothing.
Yeah, I just got one point that we all agreed on last time around, it just didn't make it in, so um, page nine. The end of twenty one. The language, we're gonna remove the words to all situations.
Correct.
Read on that.
Correct.
The copy I'm holding is.
Okay, so.
Stuck in there, so.
We'll be.
Page nine.
We'll be responding, period.
Responding, period. I think that was agreed.
Okay.
Uh, agreed, so if I could read the three things that I noted that were agreed to, that wasn't in the uh, the draft, that was one of them. Um, Mr. Divine, so I'll just um. I'll read them off and attorney Stein, um, so you have it as well. The three things were paragraph twenty one on pages eight and nine, as Mr. Divine stated. The words to all situations was to be struck, that's what was uh, asked for by the board and voted on. Paragraph twenty two on page nine. We agreed to s- to strike or provide the planning board with a separate decommissioning bond and a form acceptable to the planning board, who's gonna end before that. And on. He, paragraph twenty six on page nine. I just clarified the language.
So Attorney Brown, would we end with Town of Franklin? Is that? For twenty two?
Uh, yeah, on twenty two, yes.
Okay.
Would end at the end of Town of Franklin. And what I did just to uh. On paragraph twenty six.
Mm-hmm.
And I believe this was Mr. Divine's uh, 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 language. I'll read it out loud, it was, any change of use or increase of intensity of the permitted use shall require a public hearing to either modify the existing permit or to issue a new permit, period. Additionally, any change of use to parcel two shall require a new application and public hearing. So I just made sure it was very, very clear, um. I hope that was the intent of the.
On that last sentence, I just had that any new or change in use to parcel two was all I had. In my notes.
So, so I think we all kind of agreed that parcel two, the issue there was we didn't do a traffic study. And basically, right now, it's gonna be a solar project, parcel two, we're saying it's a solar project and you know, the change of use is actually a question I have, because right now it's recreation. We're not saying you can do, have recreation in the, in the future, we're saying it's a solar project and parcel two is a solar project. And we're not, so the change of use is actually, um, I would ask our attorney, we have a better language. I think you had some nice, nice language there last time. Um, but.
We said la- what I had in my notes from last time was just that any new or changed use of parcel two shall require a new application and public hearing. And I think if you refer to a new use or a changed use. Yep.
That's acceptable.
Any new, yeah, I like that.
And that's in there.
That's, that's as it is now, right? As we're reading it now, Amy?
It's, it's in there for twenty six at the end, any new or changed use of parcel two shall require a new application.
Okay.
Hearing. Mm-hmm.
It, all I was, all I was doing was breaking, breaking up, I think, one sentence and making it two, that's all.
Right.
Yep.
You can just go over the other two changes, please. Don't, don't want to recite tonight.
That one was getting rid of at the end of twenty one, to all situations. And then twenty two, we're getting, we're ending at Town of Franklin, period.
Okay.
And then um. I believe. I believe, Robin, twenty nine, we wanted to add in to, we were just, it was almost backwards, so we were just gonna have it say, prior to the commencement of work on each respective parcel, the applicant shall update the December twenty eighth letter to reflect the payment for parcel one.
No, 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 we want. No, what we, it, that, that's fine, we wanted to say that, we want them to do it now, so. The applicant is gonna update. Did you already do it?
Good.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, I didn't, did you already get the letter, Amy?
Yes.
They, he did email that, yes.
Okay, so the issue is that the original letter said that payments would be due prior to pulling a building permit, and as Tim pointed out, they don't need a building permit, so all this was requiring is that the applicant update the December twentieth letter to reflect that the trigger for the payments shall be commencement of work on the lots, not pulling a building.
That's how I remember it as well. What's commencement of work?
And, Mr. Chair, we did, we su- we submitted that letter.
Yes.
We updated it, and so the decision reflects the, the reference to this letter that now has that updated change, so. That condition could stay in, or it could be stricken because it's already been satisfied, but we, we've done it already.
Leave it in.
So do you wanna leave it in with the previous decision which said the applicant shall update, that's already been done? Or do you wanna keep it with prior to the commencement of work as town council had recommended? What, Robin, what do you?
No, the prior. So that's not, just to clarify, I wasn't recommending that prior to commencement of work, they update the letter.
Okay.
The condition was that the letter be updated to reflect that the payments will be due prior to commencement of work. So I haven't seen what was, what came in, but to be clear, what was changing was not when the letter needs to be updated, what was changing was the content of the letter that the payments are due prior to commencement of work on each lot, as opposed to prior to pulling a building permit, because there are no building permits.
Correct. So I think I wanna leave this language in there.
Okay.
Although the letters are to be.
Okay.
Yes, you have the letter.
I, apparently.
And Mr. Chair, for me, just, I can read the letter to the board if you'd like.
Oh, sure, so we can get in the record, that'd be helpful.
Sure. So I read it at the last meeting and now, I'll, I'll, I'll do it, this is says, dear Miss Sutherland, Next Grid Inc. is pleased to offer donation to the Town of Bellingham Fire Department and or Police Department for its equipment and resource needs. Next Grid will donate a total of fifty thousand dollars. A sum of twenty five thousand dollars will be donated prior to the commencement of earthwork for parcel one. A sum of twenty five thousand dollars will be donated prior to the commencement of earthwork for parcel three. Next Grid looks forward to being a part of and contributing to the community betterment of the Town of Bellingham. Signed, Daniel Server. So the only lines that were changed were, instead of prior to issuance of building permit, it now says prior to commencement of earthwork. And so that's been submitted, it has the same date, and it's referenced in the decision as part of the record.
And so I, I don't wanna be nitpicky, because I don't know what the difference is between work and earthwork. I assume this project involves earthwork, we had just talked about prior to, to any work on the project.
Uh, Mr. O'Cardy asked us to do earthwork last time, that's why we did it.
I think once they start.
I just had work in my notes.
Moving, I know we didn't have it in our notes. I think once they start moving.
I just had site work. Yeah, I just had site work in my, in my notes. Okay, as long as you're comfortable. Okay.
I, I, I don't wanna speak for the board. But I think earthwork, site work interchange. Can I ask the uh? Engineer or site work?
Oh, I called site word.
Okay.
Well, I, 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 I will gladly state to the board that uh, we understand the intent that earthwork equals site work for the purposes of this letter and uh, the representation that we're making to you.
Any other, any questions? I entertain a motion. Sign the approval. The vote. Thank you, I'm a second. Any discussion? Call for the vote.
Dennis, I.
Right, I.
Go I?
Go I.
Nick, I.
That motion passes, you know, Emerson.
Thank you, members of the board.
I wanna thank all the parties in the public for working with this on this. It's been a lot, long project. Uh, they, we accomplished a lot. And again, to the applicant, uh, thank you very much. And it was a pleasure working with you. But you're not going away. We'll see you soon.
So, the next step is, once everybody signs this tonight, I will file it with the town clerk tomorrow.
Yep.
And then we'll send it to the butters, um, that the decision's been filed, and then there's the twenty day appeal.
What date?
I'm.
This actually is a thirty day appeal period?
Oh, this is a thirty day? Okay, so thirty days.
Thirty days to the zoning board, I believe. I believe it's, it says it in the decision, but I believe believe it's thirty to the zoning board, right? Yeah.
Okay.
Under the bylaw. I believe.
Yes, so we'll sign that, so then I'll send out the butter notices.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night.
Thank you all.
Would you like to kind of be in?
Yes.
Okay.
So I think the next thing, Amy, um.
We have WS.
Is WS.
Oh, absolutely, yes.
With the all. You guys.
Kind of our, our neural, your ankle deep in newspaper.
Okay, I'm gonna move past the open presentation material as we get into the discussion, um, so. Last time we met our heroes was November sixteen, I think, right? And we were continuing discussion, we really started the discussion and had a lot of progress and kind of very much narrowed the focus on some of the visualization items that this board had asked us to investigate. If you recall, we provided some, some renderings and photo simulations of what we will or really are not expected to see through the four ninety five corridor. We had developed a quick animated video showing of the model what's constructed. And this board asked us to take a look at what that might look like in effectively winter conditions, leaves off trees, things like that. So we, we've done that, the board has that material uh, with you tonight. We also did, um, there was some discussion about the potential visibility or lack of from North Main Street. So we did some sections that we'll discuss tonight that uh, I think confirm what we, I would suspect that the visibility from North Main Street is effectively zero. Um, we also finished up the, the peer review and revising the site development plans, it's, is, as you recall. We had had just prior to our November sixteenth meeting, had a very productive discussion with the conservation commission that influenced and allowed us to wrap up the design with some of the mitigation areas that we were putting down with them. We submitted those plans on, almost over a month ago on December seventh. And then this board's peer review consultant, DSC, provided a final letter acknowledging that all of the outstanding technical comments that were pending our discussions with the commission have been resolved to their satisfaction, so they've essentially written a clean letter saying they don't have any additional comments, and they issued that letter, Amy, January third, about over a week ago. And then, uh, at our last meeting, we had had some discussion about the driveway and the improvements that have been made there, and the consultant that the board had asked for you, MDM, provided some testimony as to their incurrence with that design with some of the changes that they recommended having been incorporated. So we, we kind of at least in our, our opinion, came to closure on that item, we can talk about that, I think the focus of what I'd like to go through tonight, because it was the primary focus of our discussion previously, was those visualizations and infections. Do you what that, that looks like with the leaves off trees condition that we have discussed? Um, so I will. And we'll get into that right now, um, bring up, just getting things ready, it's taking a second to load. Right, chair, I'm going to. I'll give it loaded up, so it's not. With our computer doesn't have, uh. Right, so you don't trust me with it, perhaps better said, right?
Part town.
Yeah. Alright. So I will start with. We'll start with the visualizations that we concluded. No, I think. Put that on the screen, could we see that? Um. Same exact vantage points that we did before, so nothing's changed from the positioning of the camera from what we had done previously, so you're looking at the same things we looked at back in November, uh, which we had done in more of a fully vegetated condition, this is the winter condition, the first thing is just an existing conditions photo that was taken fairly recently, I think. Yeah, these were November twenty seventh, so the Monday after the Thanksgiving holiday, which was the first opportunity to get out here to get some photos. So, and then what we've done again here is same photo, and we, we go to the building in the background, and the reason that we had mentioned previously that it's ghosted is because it's not expected to be seen, you can see it kind of just in, inner, are superimposed on the image in the background. And then the third image here, this is the model of what you'd be expecting to see, and as you can see here the building's not probably in that, that image. Next one was, this is the ramp, so this is just the existing photo, again, as Jeff mentioned, this was taken right after Thanksgiving. Second photo, or again, Mitch, is the model, you can see that, kind of again, superimposed building. Superimposed building in that, uh, left side, left center of the image. And then the third image, same vantage point, but the rendered model. And again, you can sense as to what you can or cannot see there. And then, yeah, this is northbound on four ninety five, so almost immediately opposite of where the theater is. Kind of see, but looking at this again, existing photo superimposed with the building kind of ghosted in the background. And then the rendered version of the model, again, too, you can see the leaves are off the trees then. So, um, one thing that, that this model is also reflective of, then we tried to enhance this, because it might not be able to tell, and we did do some landscaping upgrades to which are reflected on the plans that we submitted, uh, there, and what we've done. So I can call for landscape plans, we can give that. We'll be showing where those are. So what we've done, and these were embedded this part of, like I said, December seventh. So, so this is the first part, so this is the northern edge of the building. And I find the zoom feature, I need. Um.
I think it's the lower right hand corner.
Lower right hand corner, where this thing is. Oh, there we go, yeah, I had, I had the zoom screen over it, which you can't see. So on the northern part of the property, what we did is we added in a number of coniferous trees here on the corner. Which are gonna be something, you know, example like green giant arbor buddies, which have a pretty fast growth rate, wide canopy, and we stagger them and kind of that that sinuous pattern, so they're filling in gaps where they kind of start narrowing it up. And that screening, we expect will enhance the, you know, existing vegetation, both when it's fully leaves and the leaves are off, and as the rendering suggested, um. This here, you might not even really see because of the density of the canopy that's already in front of it. Similarly, what we had done on the south side of the building. We did a similar planting configuration though a bit more focused right here, because this is the south side here, and we picked a strategic location where we were just making sure that with that, with that existing buffer was thin, quote unquote, it's not thin, it's just thin relatively speaking, so we brought some enhanced vegetation there just to further bolster that existing vegetative screen, and as the rendering suggests, sorry, just.
No, I was gonna say, this is also reactive to topography, the tree, I think it was still, we might have made the point about bums and or grading through there. These trees are located in those kind of low spots that are naturally existing, but we're grading up in this highway right away.
Yeah.
So try to focus those plant, again, with or without them, you have to really be looking for them to find them in the model at the end of the day, but they do fill in some of those lower level lines of site underneath branches, things like that, so they minimize visibility from the highway right away. Thank you, but they were located in those lower spots that, that already dictated their placement.
Yeah. So. And that. At least, I think that kind of addresses the question about, you know, for spring, summer seasons, when leaves are off and I it, it nicely shows that we expect the same kind of result from a visualization scale, because that, that building's not gonna have a very, very limited any visibility to wrong. That location, um, any questions on that before I continue, or just keep going?
Please continue.
Keep going, okay.
Well, no questions for you.
Got it. So the next thing we did was in response to the question about visibility from North Main Street. So you can see here, those red lines on the screen, and I presume you have the exhibits in front of you as well. Those are the locations we took sections from. And the locations we took the sections from and prepared were influenced by the conversations we had at our prior discussion and locations where we thought may be the best opportunity to kind of gauge where the visibility must be. The first one, which we call AA, because we're very, very creative with our our naming system, is the one that's in the leftmost side. It's effectively intersection where Outback is looking through floor and decor, through Home Depot and towards our building. And just for context, we took a photo that's looking along that line, too. So this photo was taken a week ago.
Yeah, just because Larry's Liquor's parking lot. So looking towards the short pump station that's there on the back, the North Main Street entrance drive.
So this is the back of the floor and the cores, the kind of that white building in the in the image. Home Depot's behind that, which you can't see in this image. And then way behind that would be our building. So what this shows is, I'll zoom in on that, it's a little bit tough to see because it's a very long section where the building from from zero, which is at that point on the left side, to where it interfaces the building is nearly a half a mile through buildings and pretty dense vegetative screen. But this is the section.
Literally and perfectly through buildings.
Through buildings, yeah, yeah, yeah. The buildings are going to be a visual obstruction, right? You're going to see, you're going to see floor and decor. And as that image suggested, you'll see the back of floor and decor. You can't even see Home Depot.
One of the things that I think the section, and it's consistent through all the sections here, but this, the proposed building, top of building is consistent with the top of Home Depot, the top of floor and decor. The finished floor of the warehouse building is actually about twenty feet lower than a Home Depot finished floor. It's twenty feet lower than the grade that is most of North Main Street. And then the highway is another ten feet or so lower than that. So just to give you a sort of sense of scale, which which gives the warehouse building a little taller than Home Depot and and floor and decor. So the roof lines are more or less at the same elevations what the section indicates. And the sections are exaggerated vertically, so they're ten times vertical than they are horizontally or something.
If, with, like, given the length of the section we're looking at, if we did it at a one to one, it would just look flat. You wouldn't, you wouldn't be able to see any vertical relief in there because it's a half a mile long. So the first kind of, the first gray blob on the screen, that's the Outback. The next one here, that's floor and decor. That's Home Depot. This hatched in area here is the existing trees and the wooded area. And then this on the far right of the image, that's, that's the new warehouse building.
Drag it down just a little so you can see the, can you see the section on the aerial as well? Oh, yeah. So I can see that, there you go, right there.
Can you determine this, this view based behind thinking that this would be the most likely area from which you could see something? Or how did you pick this location?
I think it was an example of of a location that most everyone could sort of have a reference for. Yeah. The other two locations, as you take a look at topography along North Main Street, it undulates somewhat. The sections along North Main Street where the grade actually climbs up off the street, gets up a good eight, ten feet and then drops back down into the forest. So your line of sight is immediately obscured by a knoll that exists. We took those sections at actual low points across our houses. We found those low points where in theory, there's no earth that would block your view. But there's several thousand square, several thousand linear feet of forest. So we picked those spots, topography dictated where they were.
And part of the reason we selected this, in addition to what Jeff just suggested, was it was the vantage point that's got the least vegetated buffer, right? So you're looking through parking lots, loading areas where if the only thing that would presumably get in your way would be a building. And we wanted to see how the roof lines compared, if that building would be, you know, how it would be relatively.
That was the other thing, was to get sections through the existing crossroads buildings to give you a sense of where those roofs were. But I think there had been some questions about relative to everything else around it, was this thing sitting up? We had been responding by saying that was relatively low compared to everything else. I think these sections sort of give a good illustration of that. And and cutting through the buildings helped communicate that. That was, I think, another question that Phil raised.
Yeah, I'd be interested to see this, the B and the C.
Yes, we just, this is B, which is caught halfway down, a third of the way down North Main Street. And we're kind of swinging that arc down North Main. And this is, this is the second one, but intermediary stop. So you're looking right, right down that B section line. And you'll see, this is the B section line up top, I'll zoom in so we get a little better grasp what that is. So three houses, it's like the third residence that you're coming down and starting to get through that, that curve in North Main Street. The zero points essentially that front yard. And then you're going towards the building and the building here is twenty-three hundred feet away from that image we just looked at into the into the screen. So what that looks like, and to Jeff's point, what we did here, too, we took that section, you kind of see the topography, what Jeff was talking about just a minute ago. This right here, cursor gets washed out, but it's top left of image. Those contours that look like they're kind of coming to this little circle on top, that's the mound, that's the knoll that exists in there. If we had moved that section up a hundred feet, you'd be going right through that knoll and it would be a little disingenuous because you'd have this earth burn that was cutting it off. So we moved that section south and kind of pulled it through this little valley or this subtle depression that exists between two higher knolls. There's a knoll right below it. So part of what influenced this section was wanting it to be not obstructed by, you know, an earth mound, but rather lower spots, you have a more linear vantage point. And we relying on the vegetation to, to see how that looks with the screening. So the photo, as the photo suggested, is pretty dense. This is the section here. As you can see, this kind of dense hatch bird area is the vegetation which extends essentially from the right away. And then goes to about two thousand feet, maybe a little over two thousand feet. And you can see the topography kind of dropping quickly. So that's that sag, that little saddle in the topography that you see. And then when the building is there, about twenty-three hundred feet away from the zero point.
Make sure I understand. That's kind of the top of the tree lines.
Approximately, yep, yeah.
So this building is basically below the tree lines, but the conclusion on this.
Sure, yeah, it's a pretty mature vegetation, obviously, that exists today, yeah. And and it's, it's, it's actually, we were pleasantly surprised that it's got a lot more coniferous vegetation in there than deciduous do. So you, you have a lot of seasonal all year screening in there. And the vegetation is so dense, even the deciduous trees that are leaves off the branch network is just so interwoven that it blocks visibility pretty quickly. And the distance, too, makes it even more, even more hidden. I'll, I'll pull that up to see if this section again for context.
Does it be difficult to see this?
Yeah. We have, we have a couple other ones, too. So what we'll show at the end of this is, is for context, what we also wanted to do is take photos of crossroads, too, because there are existing buildings there, right? And at the end of this, we'll, we'll cut through some photos. We took some photos from similar vantage points, looking backwards crossroads, because Home Depot exists, floor and decor exists, right? That gives you a benchmark. Okay, what is this vegetation due to an existing structure that's even a little bit closer even than this would be? So that, and you'll see that you can't, you can't see it unless you're really, really looking at it, even when you're really looking, you can't see it.
So and that's a, that's a depth of forest, if you will, or trees, that's probably fifteen or twenty percent of what is here. Yeah, we hit proposed building and the much shorter section length from North Main Street to Home Depot or crossroads. But given that this building doesn't exist today, to give you a idea of what effectiveness the trees have, which we showed, we took some photos on from North Main Street towards Home Depot and.
Okay, and this is, this is the last section, this is CC, which is almost looking kind of right at the building angle. So you're looking, again, dead along section CC into the site from North Main Street. This is the image, zoom in so you can see the section line. This is the section line, the zero point is just the opposite side of North Main Street, going back towards building. And in this instance, you are twenty-seven hundred feet away from the zero point. And you're going through, again, a little bit of a saddle in the topography. So another low point crosses over that, that AT&amp;T's, and then comes up to essentially the northern side of the building. I'll go down to the section for a second so you can see what that looks like. Now compared to. There, there's, there's your section again. So the trees are a little bit more inset, but not, not much, but equally as dense. And again, it's another, it's like twenty-one hundred linear feet of uninterrupted mature vegetation between us and North Main Street.
Scroll to the right a little. Yeah, you're covering the building.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't, yeah, my screen, my screen is okay, I apologize.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Again, the tree line, basically.
Essentially, yes, yeah. We're, we're a bit lower than the road, but it's pretty flat. The reason the photograph is flat now is because you have that, that's large, you can see the cedar swamp that exists. So it's, you don't get a lot of topography change through there.
Again, density is about the same as the other.
Similarly, very, very similar, yeah. Yeah, I can go back to the photo if it's useful.
No, it's okay.
I think what I'll, what I'll do, too, they'll pop up. These are the photos we took, I mean, this is the other day, so all what these photos are here, just for context, right? So these little blue arrows that are kind of centered or low middle of the screen, that's just a key map to show you where these photos were taken from. And obviously, you can see the proximity to the crossroad center, substantially closer. The, the buffer is substantially less in terms of total distance.
You're in a relative low spot here as well. Again, as you go, come past that driveway, you, you drop down a little bit, there's the, the gas easement comes across the street at about that same location. So topographically, you're generally flat. And you're, to Austin's point, you're looking through a much shorter, much shallower tree buffer that's provided here.
So you can, so this is the first photo. Looking again, you're looking back at the, what would be the rear of floor and decor and you probably corner Home Depot.
And you can try to zoom in there and find it, but it's, yeah, I'll zoom in a little bit for austerity here, but that's what you're, that's what you're looking at. So even in the winter, with the, I think Austin said it before, the network of branches and such, the groupie job provides, reading over a much shorter distance than, than will exist between North Main Street and this proposed building.
Yep, and then again, just another photo, same, same point, just pivoting the camera a bit. As you're kind of scanning more, the first photo is focused more at an angle towards floor and decor. This is more centrally focused between floor and decor, Home Depot. You're just kind of panning from the same position, looking back into the woods. And the last photo is a bit more focused on kind of the backside of Home Depot, if you, or if Home Depot would be in this image. So this was a nice kind of leveling point for us and just affirming what we thought we knew, that there's existing features back there that you know, the, the woods are doing the screening for us and they're substantially closer. So this was kind of our leveling ground, if you will, to make sure that we've proven out it did.
Question on that?
Anything else?
Yeah, I want to be building elevations, too. That was the last one they did. They go again, so.
They kind of speak for themselves.
Yeah, I'll put them really quick. I'll, I'll, I'll put that back in that part of the conversation.
You know, we did a perspective view rendering when they entered.
Yeah, and in fact, this, you know, these, these are kind of one thing, this might be a little bit more informative.
This is as you, you know, you've, you've gone past Home Depot, past the Home Depot lumber door, down across the wetland crossing, up into the parking lot. This is your first view of the building that you get around that corner. At that northwest corner, we anticipate at least one entrance here.
Okay. Kind of interesting. So I look at this and I guess it's just a question in industry knowledge, and hopefully you can share it. This is the building that just went in just like this on Route One, looks very similar. Is it the Browns and all that? Is there a reason why buildings like this go in like Browns and?
These are grays and blues. I don't know if the rendering's coming through or not. I think we're open to, I'm not asking a change, I'm just.
I know, it felt like you talked, you know.
Yeah, it's, it's, I mean, this is a spitting image of one on Route One. Yeah, looks nice.
Good hot pink. I really had that color palette.
Yeah, it's just, you know, it's a little probably won't say it.
Yeah, someone said, but.
Yeah, let's, let's not do that.
Okay, let's change the color.
You said?
Program, I'm sorry.
Anything else?
I think we hit on everything we want to touch on, right?
It is, yeah, no, I'm pretty answering.
I'd like to turn to the board question.
We fixed again.
When you were to follow up.
So thank you for providing the additional information. Rendings are really nice, the building looks very nice, and it's nice to see that it's going much peelered. And also, I have to compliment you on the, the renderings, or I should say, the elevations that you did from one twenty-six, because I haven't really seen them at that scale, done like that before. And I think it really, you know, you did a really nice job showing.
I think we get, we stare at the plan every day and look at it and show up here and we're telling you guys, you won't see it. We're talking about the height, I think they did do an effective job.
I agree.
Given that.
I think that paints a very.
You pushed us to do it, I think it was a helpful vision.
Definitely, it paints a very nice picture, I think. And I also noticed that I had it, Ron sent that information regarding monitoring, which I appreciate, I think that, I think you did provide it before and I just missed it. So it was nice to have it.
I do, you're right, Rob, I think we, we had provided a version of it, there were some minor, minor tweaks to it that came up on the evening of the sixteenth, and that was the corresponding stuff like that, I think. We'd imagine that language just gets cut, pays me to.
Gotcha. Okay, no, excellent, so I appreciate that. And just one quick question, I was just wondering, not that it directly affects our decision, but how, how are things going with your notice of intent?
They're going, going very well, going very well. And like I said, the, what allowed us to get to this point here was some of that continued collaborative work with the commission and kind of locking in the mitigation design. Where we're at the part of the process there where we're focused on the very, very granular things of the mitigation, pinning down the design, kind of the, the micro part of that, if you will. But where we still got ways to go, and BSC is finishing up their review of that specific part of it. But we've had some great working sessions that have been very, very informative, moved that process along. And now we're focused on some very, very narrow windows, finishing that up. So good progress, and I think we're, we're very much, that light at that end, that tunnel is becoming very, very bright. So we're feeling pretty good about it.
Excellent. And I think from the peer review, from our standpoint, I think you're pretty much taking care of everything that BSC has in store.
Yeah, I had a, had a, had a good conversation with Dominic after we submitted updated plans. He hadn't been, he hadn't been intimately involved in the conservation process. So I had a thirty, forty-five minute conversation just to inform him as to what was influenced in there. And then he finished his review, he wrote the letter in January third, that said, we've addressed all the comments. You know, that, we knew that was important to the board and he was gracious enough to finish that review for us. So I think that part of that is closed now.
Nope, okay, yeah, perfect. I have nothing further.
Yes, these panels on the side, are these actual lighting? These lighting panels on the upper.
No, the, the recess panels, those are, those are just articulation.
Okay, they're not kind of, they're not glaze. Don't bring in light at all.
At the corners, you'll have rooftop lighting, I think there'll be some, some skylight type lighting, but the glazing storefront, if you will. Correct.
Yeah, I like the design, and much, um, hmm, what's the personnel going to have in this building?
We don't know, we don't have an end user identified, we, for, for the sake of analyzing its impacts. We've assumed a pretty aggressive program for traffic and parking and things like that. But we have not identified an end user or end users for the building yet, we've got. This process to finish up and have to forfeit the town to figure out the one twenty six.
Building of this magnitude, I'm just.
Can you, can you talk for one moment? Something out there, I don't want to look at it. You talked about aggressive traffic. We've looked at similar in our, in our period. So we've looked at worst case traffic scenario.
That's right.
As well.
Yeah.
I still want you to think. Only the applicant, we brought that into our consideration as well. Then you, you look at worst case, and we have it. We're working together for a, the worst case scenario for a.
I apologize, I don't like to interrupt, but I didn't want to leave that hanging out there.
Is this gonna have office space in it?
It could, yeah, I, I think, yeah, likely it, it will have some.
And maybe, maybe, I'm thinking a cafeteria too, for the personnel, that's possible?
Yep.
Um, I'm just. I wish that actually this building of this magnitude. We could have put that solar farm on the roof. It saves a lot of uh, construction of land. Yeah, are you planning on any solar on this?
We anticipate the building to be solar ready and um, time will tell and, and user will tell.
Yeah, see, I, I'm quite familiar with the, the land here, cause I think I've been. Looking at this with your company for over thirty years, you've had many proposals for that.
Quite a few, yeah.
And I know when I was in the union, we were quite interested in. Many of them, I've been down at a site, I've walked. And this is probably the. Least visible hole that I've seen in thirty years. Uh, just want to thank you.
I don't, I don't have any um. Questions uh, other than to raise a topic for. This future discussion. About the sequence of time uh, of construction versus the. The uh, work down on one twenty six.
Uh, just thank you for the, say, uh, presentations, you know, seeing the heights of the buildings from those sites, that's perfect, that's exactly what we were. The vegetation from uh, the road to some, the dips in the terrain, thank you.
Appreciate you pushing us to it, cause I, I do think it was, we were trying to explain it in words, and I understand. Why it was hard to see until, without a visual.
Good presentation, thank you.
I, I think we figured it was unlikely that. You were gonna see it from the north main, but we appreciate you taking the time to, to confirm that for us.
Understood.
Thank you, guys.
I, I want to thank you. For what you've done. Uh, I think we had a little more items to discuss. One which is mentioned earlier. I don't think it. Dealing with these buildings. You've gone above and beyond to try to hide. And I think it's the first time the planning board. Has worked with an applicant to try to hide a building. At the, as best they can. It certainly isn't a requirement or by law. And I want to thank you for making it. As minimal and advisory. For um, the tenant residents and people traveling on four ninety five. And I, I want, again, thank you. Um, I think we have a couple more items to discuss. But um, I think this has been a huge help. What's the next step? I, I have an idea in my mind.
I think, and everybody may not be in agreement, but we've been at this for over a year.
Okay.
And I think it's time where we can, you know, seek out Jim to start drafting a decision. To. Pull this together, cause eventually we, we have to get to that point, we've been at it a year, the public is more than welcome to still, you know. Provide input, but at some point, we have to start drafting a decision for this, once the board is comfortable.
What I'd like to do is something similar. Um, I'd like to begin um. The per, drafting the parameters of this.
Absolutely. Of a decision that works.
What will be contained in the decision? Favorable or unfavorable? Have something for us to look at in early February. But maybe um, can we squeeze? Is our agenda flexible on twenty fifth?
What, if, I think if, if the board can decide what would be discussed on the twenty fifth, it's a full night.
On the twenty fifth is the parameters. Of what we want to have in a decision.
Could you, could you narrow that down tonight, or are you not comfortable doing that?
I think some board members, I think you have a, you raised a least one concern.
Correct, one thing that we need to talk about, yeah, I think so.
No, I'm, I'm in agreement with, with. I think what you're getting at, because.
We're getting very close.
I mean, we. It's not even that we're getting really close, where I think we're there. We have just, we have. Been on this application for over a year, I would say six months of that has been traffic related. We have hammered down just about every single thing that we could and. To the applicant, applicants engineers. Do, you know, you guys have been proactive in getting us the information that we need and. I do think that it is time to, to render a decision, and I would say we should maybe discuss some things tonight. If it makes sense to get a decision drafted, maybe for the next meet, we can talk about some conditions tonight. You might even be able to talk about more conditions and more depth, if that's okay for the next meeting.
That's what I would like to do.
Is that? I, I don't know if, if the board is in favor of that, I am just the lowest. I'm not even the real member, so.
Is it something that possibly Jim could draft? And we could have it at a February meeting for you, for everybody to discuss, is that something that's doable?
We could have it drafted and discuss. On the twenty fifth, I know it's a tight agenda, but it'll probably be a two or three page. Full of the item list of topics that will be in a decision. That way we have the public. We also have at least one additional meeting on conservation, like you hear, I don't want to. Make a decision before conservation slows, cause we've been learning concurrently. So I, I agree. I think we can have items to discuss on the twenty fifth, it will be outlined in a draft decision. And I'll make a move on, you know, twenty fifth to move forward.
How busy is the twenty fifth?
It's, it's very busy, we have North Street. We have three oh six Maple, we have Lucy, not Lucy, I'll just put out, we have um. What's the other one? We have a backlot subdivision. We have um. What's the other ones? I think that might be it, but that's, it's gonna be a later. Oh, right, we have parcel, well, no, we have parcel three. It, it's, it's gonna be a late night.
Yeah, that seems.
Okay, then what, then what I like to do. Is I have that available for the twenty third. For us to look at and exchange back and forth with the applicant. And then uh, make a decision in February. The close public hearing and ask for a decision to be drafted. Based on what we, discussions on the, what we see in the twenty.
Yeah, I think Brian brings up a, a huge point in this, is we, how to work through that and. You know, the other thing is that I think that. The applicant has, has done some things. Engineering, some of the other work that I think you probably need a quick presentation on. To go towards your, you know, when you evaluate a project. When you evaluate a project, you, you look at the type, the whole thing, and you know, you've done some engineering work and some of the other stuff that. I think it's tied into this, but you know, maybe we need to.
Related to, you know, roadway specific.
Yeah, so, and, and, and I'm saying this in a positive way, is that these are positive things that go to a decision that we're making.
I appreciate that, I think to Brian's point, we fully expect there to be a condition that the roadway improvements need to be in place to open this building. That's been our understanding from the jump and fully expect that to be a condition, I think that's what you were alluding to.
Right, and, and, and more specifically, when this construction start compared to when this construction started on one twenty six?
Yeah, we, we, we're aiming to try to align the two, it's our understanding that the town has advanced. The one twenty six quarter design. Almost to its seventy five percent. Point, um, chapel engineering, the firm that Ron is affiliated with is, is doing that design, the town is their client. We funded the initial twenty five percent design. That allowed them to go submit for the Mass Works grant, and this project was. The primary piece of economic development that was represented in the Mass Works grant, that. Grant application was prepared by the town administrator and. Uh, Jim was involved in it, and I think Amy and others might have been involved in it, is, we were just a piece of it, they, they presented it. Um, and submitted the town as, that was the applicant for the Mass Works grant to, to get that initial funding. They've utilized that funding to advance that design, so. While I, I think there's an offer describing what that is, it is. Happens to be running concurrently with our permit process, but it is a town roadway improvement project that's happening alongside this. We are committing to subject to receipt of approvals for our project to contribute some money to that, that's part of what we've committed to. Um, but, but the details of it. Uh, the twenty five percent design went through a, a lengthy review process. With D O T District Three, with the uh, D O T in Boston, I don't know if Ron's still there, he. But that design is fairly well along and. Fairly well baked at this point with, with the town's design, but whatever approvals they needed to seek or. Process they needed to go through, I know they have to go through a con con process. I know they've had one introductory meeting, I think. Um, but I don't believe they've made a filing yet, I think they're poised to make a filing based upon the seventy five percent design plan for this. My understanding is they'll be. Um, approaching completion on those sometime in the first quarter of this year.
I think you can put it as something as a condition, but I don't think you can hold this applicant to the state's timeline. I, I think that we've got, I just don't think we can do that, but I think you can put it as a condition of, you know, we can word it in a way that there's a condition.
Well, we've talked twice that until that project was done. This project wouldn't get completed, or, I, I mean, the day one. First, first meeting we had was crystal clear, that until the roadway project was done. This one didn't get started.
So maybe. We can't open, we, we couldn't open the facility, I think construction might happen at the same time, it just couldn't.
We gotta figure out, we gotta figure out how to tie those, and I, I don't, and I'm not educated enough on what the town was doing. On that project, and maybe we need a, a, a quick presentation to the board about what's that doing so that.
That's the plan right there.
Yeah, haven't been, it hasn't been presented to us.
There for the fourteen months we've been in front of you.
Do you, are you guys aware of what's going on?
There is a road, the town has a road. Right, they are trying to, you know, we can certainly, I don't know, the D P W, and maybe he could at the next meeting, right, a meeting, come and. It's, it, we can certainly do that.
I think the meeting, uh, second meeting in January is pretty rough. So what I would like to do, look at and tie three of you. Uh, we've been discussing this a long time. We've had a public inquiry. What I would like to do is um. Look at the, the topics or parameters of the discussion. At the, uh, favorable, favorable decision. At the um, first meeting in February. Have Jim look at items that we need to address and some possible language. Get import from, uh, find out where we are with conservation and get some input. Do you want to go from the town or?
I, maybe we need to get a present, I mean. This project's contingent, and the timing's contingent, and our conditions are contingent, contingent. On what's going on with the town's project, as was just described. So if, you know, how do we write a condition that actually ties that in?
Just, you say just that.
You're sorry?
You just say just that.
This one doesn't get started.
There's, there's a lot of moving pieces.
There's more language to it.
Yeah, and the, and, and I didn't want to bring it up tonight, it's just that something that we need to figure out before we. And there's um, discussions that need to be happened between the town and the applicant about. How in the world are we gonna pay for this and, and.
But that's not, that's not.
Not our, but that needs to be figured out too.
Yeah.
So. That's all, we gotta work through those things before we.
That's why we, we come up with this.
And I don't think we should talk about it tonight, because it's late and.
No, but how, how do we get, how do we get on that page?
What's like, I think Bill's idea is a good idea, that Jim's gonna take a look and.
Holistically looking at.
Holistically and try to figure out, this is the stuff we gotta tick off before we can.
Okay.
Draft a decision.
Now, it may happen that some of the language that Jim comes up with. May not be included in the decision. But you know, we just want to make sure, you know, got our lives, you know. First, our routines. And you know, get import, you know. From Jim and or the town administrator, maybe in a draft document of, you know, what's, what's happened.
And if it's acceptable, we're happy to, to work with them ahead of the next meeting to.
So you, you, you're fine with this, you know, dive front.
I, I think um, most of you have heard me talk about our framework, or just, I'm anxious to move forward towards that, I think it'll help flesh out. Some of these questions and, and lead to some good conversation, I think, if Jim can take a swing at that, we can work with him. Between now and the next meeting and, and, and then could uh, discuss that stuff in front of the board. Think we can get to a lot of it, um, I, I expect a lot of it is fairly standard language that, that's gonna line up here anyway, so.
Yep.
Um, and topically, I think we've, we, we just get someone to kind of go back through and. And summarize the topics to your.
Make sure we get everything.
Yeah.
I'll be sorry, go to further, anyone in the public, everything they want to add. Yes. Jump in the back. No, me. Live across the street, been there for, be twenty years this year. And uh, so just trying to, first of all, understand the timeline. Twenty fifth, nothing's happening?
No.
No, no meeting regarding this on the twenty fifth.
It will not. We're too robust already.
Yeah. We're gonna be having like neighborhood meeting for this project, I mean, you have one for the, the Bluebird. Place, um. Any person I've asked in Bellamy, do you know about the warehouse project? Nobody seems to know anything about this, you said there's been public discussion. Other than me, I don't know anybody that's brought up a question over the last few months about any of this. I'm talking about a, a major project that involves Hartford Avenue. And thousands of cars being brought through during peak hours. You get traffic situations now, and the public doesn't know any of this. We, we have, and I want to be careful what I say here, as well as the applicant. I'm gonna speak to the board. We have been very, very transparent. No, I know you have, in, in all our meetings. They, they are um, public. Uh, we've not seen a lot of public. Um. We've asked for input. We've had, you know, numerous meetings over a year. I think at this point, we do a special meeting with the neighbors. We, we're at a point now where, where, where we're getting towards the end. And um. Um. I thought we'd see more input from the public, but we have.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, we did, we made a filing in September of twenty two, we noticed. All the, the orders required under the notice provision, we did have a dozen or so people here.
Correct.
The very first night. I think most of them were wondering about a connection out to North Main Street, when they saw the plan and saw. Close to four ninety five it was, and how far away from North Main Street.
Twenty three, though, right?
Pardon me?
You said twenty two, twenty three, you mean?
No.
No, twenty two.
This project's been in front of this board for fourteen months. Coming up on fifteen months. And there were a dozen or so people here that very first night, and they, once they saw the plan and saw. That it didn't involve a road out to North Main Street, that it wasn't gonna be a traffic contributor in that corridor. It is, you've been the only person who's come since, is my recollection of it.
Yeah.
But.
And we appreciate you coming.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah. But I think at this point, you know, it's been open for um, a long time.
Okay.
I'm just trying to get clarification on how we make this subject to the road project.
I'm just trying to get clarification on how we make this subject to the road project. Um. Being occurring before permitting or construction. I just.
We, we're gonna work through that language. I don't know what it is right now. But you have said.
We, we, we've agreed twice early on that that was the.
That was my understanding.
And, yeah.
And they, they've agreed.
It's. And it seemed to fluctuate a little earlier in the meeting.
And you, we're all agreeing that, that, um, I don't wanna speak for the rest of the board, but the applicants agreed. We brought it up twice. It's important to me, so it, we just gotta figure out what that language is. And that's, that's what I was trying to ask questions about how to tie that in. And that's what we're gonna put our expert on.
The last thing we wanna do is come up with language tonight. That's not correct and be stuck with, for the benefit of us and for the benefit of the applicant.
Sure.
That's why we're all gonna have almost a month to exchange ideas back and forth. To look at the parameters of the language that we wanted to discuss about, about everything. We've, we've been very transparent. I've used that word a lot with the applicant and the neighbors, those who have shown up about what we wanted to. Our meeting, so then, you know, they're on Zoom, they're, I believe, on the TV, um. So, yeah, we could not have been, you know, more transparent. We appreciate you coming, but we do wanna get that language correct.
Right.
We don't want to make a mistake on, on either of ours, yeah. You know, this is a collaborative approach to how we're gonna do this. You know, we, we have done things here that, um. Other planning boards have not done. We did a peer review of a peer review of a parking. No, no one has done that before. We've asked, you know, um, to try to, um. Don't stir up, lend the building in as best we can.
The question of that, we've already, already addressed.
So now we're just getting the particulars of the agreement flushed out. And tonight's, I don't think, is the place to do it, because we don't wanna make a mistake. And I think we, you know, that's why we have a former town planner available. And, I know, a lot of former available to help us as we go through this.
But Jim will be directed to. Proceed with drafting.
Uh, the parameters that we're discussing, so we can discuss it in February and then take the next, obviously, what could be the next step. Jim in the back, any questions?
Uh, Steve Collett and, uh. You know, I'm on the Conservation Commission, but I wanted to add something. As a member of, uh, the town and, uh, to try and. Support your, your position. Um. Over the years, I've caught myself not paying attention to the website and the resources available to me. To keep me informed of the ongoings of these projects and then I've been in, found myself in years past in your position where I. Wait a minute, I know nothing about this. Um. It's important as a member of the community for our biannual town meetings and all the other projects. To seek out the information that is available to us. All these meetings are recorded. Uh, we can, and, and I do on occasion sit and listen to them. Um, and to support, develop it. They have been transparent. And I know, and other projects, I've caught myself not paying attention to the timeframe. And, and getting updated late in the process, so it, it's important. Uh, I just wanted to add that I do have a question.
Certainly.
And so the start of this project is contingent on the completion of the road project.
The opening of this facility would be, the roadway improvements would need to be in place. So, so they both could be under construction at this.
Simultaneously, because the road job. Do we have a timeframe on that?
We, we're not aware of that and we've intentionally.
Is there a remote chance that could be years away?
Depending on funding, we think, uh, I, I, I prefer that the town spoke to the status.
Yeah, it's not for us.
It's my understanding that, that the entitlement process and the design process could be finished later in this year and. If funding were in place, it, it, it's realistic to think it could be under construction in the twenty-five construction season.
The reason I ask, and I, it's, I appreciate the time from the town perspective, it would be unfortunate if. Uh, WS got to this point. And the building sat for a long period of time unutilized. Because the state. Which they have a history of. Uh, needing more time to get their side of the, the project done.
To be clear, it isn't a state. Right, it's not the state undertaking the project, it's the town undertaking the project. It's the state completing the review and the permitting part of it, that's.
Pardon my ignorance.
All other ways, but.
Correct.
It is the town.
Yeah, reach out to the state.
That's undertaking the project itself.
And it, it, it's, it's been a partnership. And that, that's as far as I feel comfortable staying.
I understand.
This is beyond the scope of, of this.
No, I'm good.
Can I, uh, that, so to your point, I do think that getting some type of update from town staff. On the construction of this, or I should say the permitting of. The Hartford Ave improvements would be extremely beneficial because I know we've been talking about how it's been approaching seventy-five percent completion. I know based on experience dealing with DOT, it's lengthy. I could use other words to describe it. Lengthy is one that I, we use a public setting, um, but, um. With that being said, the. I would also like to know if we're at the seventy-five percent, or approaching the seventy-five percent completion for whatever entitlements that they're looking at. If they've spawned other entitlements that are needed through DOT, because I know that that sometimes happens. And if that's the case, if we're at seventy-five percent for whatever, I don't know what permit this is for the improvements. And they need something else regarding stormwater or something, that could be a, a year out now that they're starting this permit. But they're seventy-five percent complete this other one. So getting that information, I think, would be really helpful, not only for us, but definitely for.
It's my understanding that the design has advanced to a seventy-five percent point and all the permits necessary for the design.
Yeah.
Um, there's no reason why they shouldn't be in place by the end of twenty-four, is my understanding.
Okay.
The one wildcard I suspect might be, um, Conservation Commission. There, there is a local process for that.
Yeah.
Gotcha, okay.
But I, I, it is the, the, the design of the permit process, it's, it's seventy-five percent.
Okay.
So that's why I don't, I think it's.
But I, I do, I do think.
Push it down.
Some communication internally.
Definitely.
And that's a, a description of the project from the town.
Yeah.
You'd have to participate, but.
Yeah.
To the board's benefit, the applicant's benefit and the public's benefit.
I mean, I can get that.
Okay, um, I hate to, hate to ask the question. Um. I think we just asked for continuation. What?
February second would be the continuation?
Yeah. No, that.
Okay, no. We have the eighth.
Yeah.
And then we would need a decision deadline extension of the twenty-third, February twenty-third. Because we'd have a meeting on the twenty-second.
Okay.
Does that sound doable, or do you want me to push it out to March?
Out to the first meeting in March, but I, I think we'll be fine. So I'd like to have that in the back pocket in case something happens with language.
So March fifteenth, that, okay. We'll send this to you tomorrow.
Okay.
That's it, the board is okay with it?
An entertaining motion? So.
We continue to February second.
Yes.
With an extension deadline date of March fifteenth.
You said the second or the eighth?
Eighth.
Good, yes, the eighth, yes.
And then we'll, we'll, it's got the parameters.
Yes.
On this other.
Yes.
All in favor, and we'll start with the end here, we need a second.
I can second.
Okay, that's fine, thank you.
Can I double on that?
Yeah, I'm.
All right, I'm behind one of you, that's right, yeah, that's right.
That was I.
Brian.
Bill on.
Bill on.
Nick on.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Two more things, we've got the minute from the ninth and the minutes from the sixteenth.
Sure, thank you for coming in the back.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Hopefully we'll see you in November.
Yes, I. The, the next meeting is the.
Eight, eight, eight.
Thank you, sir, that'll be posted.
Give me one question. Do you ever set up times or are you always, you just?
It's always seven.
It's always seven, but.
Do you have an order of it or just everyone just shows up at seven?
We have.
Uh, we have an agenda that's published as a rule. We don't try to put times here because we want the applicant to make a quick presentation. I should just forewarn you, we have had some meetings that have gone.
I forgot about.
Oh, we're not that entertaining.
All right, thank you very much.
I think that was good one.
I feel I had a chance to, um, read the minutes for the past two meetings. I'd like to have two separate motions.
What are the dates?
November ninth.
I'll just read the November ninth meetings.
I need a second?
Second.
All in favor? Right? Let's spend it so you can go.
Oh, Rob, I.
That is I.
Brian.
Bill on.
Bill on.
Nick on.
Second meeting once.
The sixteenth?
Of December.
We'll refer to the December sixteen meeting.
Rob?
Rob, I.
Rob seconded. Bob seconded.
Rob.
I'm sorry.
That is I.
Brian on. Bill on.
Bill on.
Nick on.
You need to pass something. Leave a signed document.
Brian is so aggressive.
Entertaining motion, new judge.